First item on the agenda is Skylar Roberts of the County Road Department. Sir, what's this looks like?
That's the first thing on the list, I guess. So, I believe they're in order with the highway tax, district, county road and bridge, and then federal aid, is that how it is? Highway tax is last?
Yep.
Okay.
County road and bridge is first on the list, yes.
Okay, county road and bridge, then it's federal aid, then road district?
Yep. And then highway tax.
Okay. So, not a lot has changed in our budget. We decreased the road construction by ten thousand. Bumped up our engineering by two, twenty thousand. The new equipment, or the equipment leasing went up, but that's because we're getting two blades in October that were approved. So, that's the new, as for the increase there, most of the league has stayed the same. Not a lot of, not a lot of stuff, the engineering went up because a lot of bridge inspections coming up next year. Any questions?
You know, you got a question mark for gravel here, so is that right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, just, I know last year we took it out because there was no money available. Any funds are going to be available for gravel?
I thought you always put in five hundred thousand for gravel. I thought that was just some money.
Charlesville fifteen oh five is a legislative appropriated. I don't have to look at much, is it a point seven?
Well, and it wasn't, it wasn't five hundred thousand, it was, it was, uh, usually we did a little in road district and a little in county road. So, that's where, like, there was like two hundred thousand in county road and bridge and in road district here was like three hundred. So, I mean, it came out to five hundred thousand, but it was in a couple budgets, so.
Okay, well, yeah.
But I thought we budgeted.
Well, we typically budgeted almost every year, at least a percentage of it, just because you always got to leave the opportunity if someone's going to crush gravel, or you can purchase gravel, or, you know, sometimes we use that for, you know, you might not use that much of gravel, but you want to do some hiring out or something, as long as it's, you know, in the budget, I mean, you kind of have some availability. I think for preliminary purposes, you probably want to make it, I mean, not outrageous, but you want to probably keep it as high as you can, so at least you have an idea of what things look like through the preliminary stage. I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to cut it short, then later on, you're like, shoot, we did have room, or that didn't turn out that bad. You better off to put it in and take it out later rather than take it out now, so. So, I'd say if that was the case, it almost made me just do the same as last year. Like, last year was two hundred and twenty thousand in that county road and bridge.
Well, last year we didn't budget anything for gravel.
Oh, no, I'm looking at twenty-two, we got, still got it.
Twenty-two, we'll have that.
Or, I mean, at least a similar, I don't know, I mean, it doesn't have to be two hundred and twenty thousand, but, I mean, your preliminary budget is supposed to look like crap. That's the, that's the list of everything you think you want, and then from there, we cut down, so. If you think you want to do that much for preliminary budget, you should put it in, you can always take it out later, you know what I mean?
Okay, that's where.
Well, we, I think we should put it in, you should put it in.
Put it in.
Yeah.
Because even if we have trucks coming into gravel, we could take it out of there.
Well, like I said, the best thing to do is to put together, the preliminary budget is your wish list, put it together the way you think you like it, and if it's gone awful when you're done, then you start making adjustments, you know. Other than that, anything else looks pretty well the same, huh?
Yeah.
But, yeah, like I said, the leasing was the biggest change, which we didn't expect, so. About federal aid?
Federal aid?
Looks like you got an increase in engineering and a little bit for gravel maintenance, that's about it.
Yeah, there's been a big changes there.
Twelve thousand dollar increase total for the whole budget, so. That looks pretty. A lot of that money for federal aid is basically just when we do particular work to the federal aid roads or for cost shares on stuff with the federal and the state.
Yep.
So, that maintenance and gravel, and what's, what's that then?
Maintenance and, maintenance and gravel, if we have any, like, we'll probably take some of that out of there for the contractors we have coming in.
So, there are two now, like, next year, let's say we hire a bunch of people to gravel.
Well, a lot of that stuff generally comes out of county road and bridge or road district, but the federal aid budget is usually pretty minimal. I mean, like, if we're going to gravel a federal aid road, most of that we're paying for out of our county road and bridge, but we might supplement five or ten grand out of the federal aid, so that way you're kind of, because the federal aid does have mill levy limit too and stuff, so you can only raise it so much with staff, so. That's why you can't really have two hundred dollars in gravel in the federal aid. Road district.
So, not a lot of huge changes in the road district really either, except for you'll see the biggest, I don't know, you guys want to do line by line, or you want to just, it's not a whole lot of big changes in here.
Looks like you just had incremental changes in a few things, like you added five thousand for engineering.
Yep.
But there are two, you don't get, you don't have to gravel in there either.
Yeah, and then, yeah, you don't have a number in the gravel, so.
So, that guy want to put that in there too, maybe?
How come you got the, the retirement up fifty thousand almost? The PERS retirement was, well, how come that's up so high?
What do you mean up fifty thousand? We budgeted two seventy-nine from last year, and we only went up a thousand dollars.
That's the health benefit.
Retirement, talking about North Dakota PERS retirement was seventy-seven thousand in twenty twenty-two, rejected, on request of one hundred and twenty-five.
Because that's, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five for twenty twenty-three, so we didn't even change it from last year.
Yeah, they didn't increase it, that's just the actual expenditure versus.
The actual, what's that, what's that, oh, okay, I see, yeah.
So, that hasn't changed from one, no, it's the same budget. Looks like you went up five thousand for contractors.
Yep.
And, uh, seven thousand for equipment leasing, which means.
Yeah, it went up a little bit, that, the biggest one you'll see is the road equipment purchase, that big number, that hundred and fifty-seven was because we ordered that plow, remember, last, I believe it was last meeting, that speed plow?
Yep.
That's the additional money there for that, so. And culverts, we usually order that at the end of the year, so. And gravel, so do you want me to put in the three hundred thousand in there then?
That's what I think I would do.
Well, like I said, it's now the time, right?
Add something.
Well, I'd say you might as well put the three hundred thousand in, and let's just see what the preliminary budget looks like. I mean, you can always cut it down to two hundred, a hundred and fifty if you want, if it's outrageous and.
Yeah, other than that, like, parts and labors didn't go up any, propane didn't, there isn't repair, didn't really go up anything. So, pretty much rest of that kind of stayed the same. Let's see. Oil, or the oil, gas and fuel, that's a tough one to budget for because it fluctuates so bad, so. Last year, we were at about four dollars and thirty-eight cents on average a gallon. And right now, it's not as bad, but.
Well, that's, that's sometimes too, where like even your gravel dollars come into play, where, I mean, not saying you want to overbudget, but that's where if you do have some gravel dollars and you run short on your oil and gas, I mean, you kind of gravel or something, or vice versa, you might not use as much on oil and gas, but you want to overspend a little on gravel, you guys make those are kind of fluctuating budget numbers, I guess, so. Okay, any questions or anything on that one, guys? I would ask them.
So, when we did our salaries, we did it at, well, we submitted for Pam, or two Pam for ours. And that is figuring in one additional employee and two temporary help, so we increased it only about seven and a half percent over last year's budget. And I remember that flipping an additional employee, not the two that were currently missing, like, adding one additional employee, so. And then travel, we knocked down just a little bit, five hundred dollars, uh, meals stayed the same, unemployment, we went up a little bit, in case we do have some temporary help. Actually, no, we didn't even go up that, sorry, stayed the same.
And with these miles requested, that's already basing it off the, kind of the same pay scale we've been talking about?
Yes, we used her pay scale, like, um, there was the discrepancy on which one. We moved the first five, like we talked about.
Yep.
And we started with, initially, we started with number six, so because we eliminated the first five, I believe you eliminated the first four and started with five, correct? I believe that, so that's, we were just one off in there, so.
Okay.
Other than that, we, we used the same one, so.
Then just so you're budgeting, your salaries, you're budgeting for a correlate to a pay scale, though?
Yes, correct, yeah, we're.
Main thing is the state.
We're hoping to implement the same thing countywide, like, with that base structure, I think it's a great thing, and that way, we don't have to either get a step or you don't get a step, that way. So, it sets the dollar amount right up front, so. As you can see, our highway tax, we're, we haven't used a lot of our big budget that week.
Well, yeah, when you're short a couple employees, you have to, yeah, a lot of salaries, so.
I don't know if you want to parlay that into the same discussion we had at the sheriff's department earlier, or wait with that, or?
Well, you're, uh, I mean, from Pam's, see, yours is up, excuse me, it's up, you know, you got it up, about fif- oh, ten, fifteen thousand.
See, I don't know how Pam, when she initially started this, she just put people in there because she didn't know what the job descriptions were or anything like that. And then she created another one without any, any other input from the road department, so. I don't know why, how she could come up with a new one again.
Yeah, I just.
With different recommendations once again.
And I have no problems with the increase, but there's a couple of them here I don't agree with. For one thing, I mean, it's like we should compensate people, you know, everybody doesn't come in on Fridays, do they? How many people actually come in on Fridays to work on the road?
It varies day to day, week to week.
It varies, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, people are.
We have a few that come in on Fridays.
Because to me, if people are willing to sacrifice, they should be awarded more, you know, the ones that come in more, that's what I look at.
What you're saying is you run a four-ten schedule, and then Fridays is kind of like a voluntary skeleton-type crew scenario you're running?
Correct.
Okay.
But I don't look at who comes in the most or whatever, I look at their value when they're at, at work.
Right, no, I agree, but at the same token, somebody that's willing to, you know. But anyway, yeah, like I said, I don't agree with all of, you know, with certain wage increases on here.
Which, do you have a particular one that you don't agree with?
Well, I just wanted them here that you jumped him all the way up to seventy-eight.
Well, that's because he got totally reclassified, he was a, he's an equipment operator, and now we're reclassified.
How often does he go out and operate equipment?
What's that?
How often does he go out and operate equipment?
Uh, not very seldom, because he did in the winter time.
Yeah, I know, that's what I say, I, I don't agree with him making more than the road superintendent, so.
Well, I'm, I'm using that as years of service also.
Yeah, but I still.
They've been here a long time, so, like.
But when it comes to the head of the department, the people underneath them should not be making more than the head of the department. There's no way.
I mean, I can increase my salary too, but I, I did it to just, I mean.
I know where you're coming from.
I was pretty, pretty fair with the guys out there, I believe, and like, I, I didn't give myself a big increase.
No, no, I'm trying to come with your increase.
Because they, I just, I think they deserve it for the years of service they've been here.
I don't care, I, he should not be making more than a road superintendent.
Well, then, a lot of them aren't going to make it.
No, but he, you got him hired than you, I don't agree with that.
And I would have figured out, why do we have two superintendents?
They don't have two superintendents, you have a road foreman and then a road superintendent like my fellow. Well, a lot of counties do that, a lot of counties have an assistant road superintendent.
Well, we've always had a road foreman too.
A road foreman, yeah, I have no problem with a road foreman, you know, but like I said, I don't agree with the one making, I don't agree with it, I just not.
Let it work. On your schedule, you show like a seven to fifty-two percent pay increase, you kidding me?
Well, that just goes to show that we're fifty-two percent behind you.
Gary, you showed your on this one, the one that's died with you?
No, I won't be part of this face game.
Well, I don't know what you guys want us to do then, we're not, like, it's pretty accurate where we're at, for the years of service and stuff like that. We cannot sustain not hiring more employees.
Actually, him and, uh, those who came on at the same year, but yet he, he's getting eleven thousand more.
Because their job duties are different.
Well, I, like I said, I don't, I'm not for it, just simply not.
Do the next guys get the same shot at the job duties that you talk about?
Just, just, do we give everybody a shot at the office? No, not right now, because it's spot filled.
I don't feel, I thought the guy that carried that in Campbell County, that's what your pay scale is, and you told me, I said, you totally stacked, you said a hundred percent. I don't know, and they're, they're lower than we are.
Are we Campbell County? No, we're Evans County.
And we're not Burley County.
Yeah, we're not Burley County, we're not any county, we're Evans County. I've been running an ad since, what, November, when we lost the first one? Luckily, we picked one up, but then now we've been running an ad since first of the year. We're not getting any. You guys all sat in the same meeting I did last month, where people were pretty, pretty upset about it. We're very short to death. This is what it's going to take, I firmly believe this is what it's going to take.
I won't accept, I mean, what you submitted, I go along with Pam Miners, what you submitted.
Well, I don't think Pam anywhere.
No, I agree with an increase, I'm just, like I said, I just don't agree with a couple of them on here, but I agree, I agree with an increase. I, I'm not against that, I'm just against a couple of them that are where they're at.
That's where I see their value at.
That's where I'm not agreeing with.
And your deal here, Skyler, is based on a forty-hour week, right, that stuff?
Yep.
It looks like the highlight on here.
Just what Pam was submitting was thirty-seven and a half.
What does that come out to officially, is it like, it's not two thousand hours, it's like two thousand?
Twenty-eighty.
Twenty-eighty, that's okay, so I thought there was a number of that. Maybe the learning curve of the step and grade deal isn't there?
Do what?
So, there's quite the learning curve of the step and grade, and you got to follow this, like doing the paper cross report. I guess I really, I mean, I really don't see a lot of problems with a lot of this, I, I would probably echo the same thing that Commissioner Holmes said, I, I I guess I feel like probably you and John should probably be switched. I guess that's what, I mean, I, I see the value the way you do too, but I do agree that the department head sets the precedent of not being the highest paid. We had that issue before in the past where we were paying a salary to the road superintendent, you know. Hourly guys were all beating it, it didn't matter that overtime or not, that's not a very good precedent either, so. I mean, I feel like you're pretty close on a lot of it, and I think the difference on, basically, I don't, I don't think you should have a, like, a foreman or supervisor type role, two steps ahead of the superintendent.
Exactly.
Man, so, I mean, I think if you swapped them, I don't think you.
Well, that's just because of the years of service.
I, I get that, but like I said, you don't, you don't want to create the precedent where the department head is not the highest paid, I guess, so that's probably the only issue that I would say for that. I mean, I mean, even for preliminary purposes, I mean, I mean, the money's probably not going to change much or the dollars, but I, I just feel like if you flip-flop that, you'd probably be I mean, I, I don't think I see an issue with any of the other guys that pays probably all.
That's just a couple thousand dollars.
Right, it's, 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 that's more basically just the idea that you don't want the superintendent, I mean, the department head should probably be the highest paid in the department, that's just kind of maybe you have an extreme year where you're doing a ton of overtime and it doesn't work out that way or something, is one thing, but the base, the base salary.
Not a salary.
Yes, I, I do agree with that.
No.
But I don't think you're far off, I don't think it's a crazy notion, I just think honestly, if you just, you're even on the same grade, and you just change the steps to reflect that the department head was making even ten dollars more, that's just, I don't think it's a good precedent, though. But other than that, I mean, just for the sake of time here, I mean, we're, we're pretty much in agreement, I'm, I don't see an issue with a lot of it. Honestly, really, you're part of the end here, but other than that one, one item, so. But that, I think it, I think it's a good tool, I think it looks good, I think them salaries is probably a lot more reflective on where we need to maintain guys and to bring on new guys, so.
So, if we swap those two around, then we can approve this today?
No, you got, to me, it's lower, his, his has got to get lower.
It did get lower, then if we swap him, him, that guy and myself.
No, I, I think it should be lower, yeah.
I don't believe that, as a department head, I don't believe that. And as the department head, I have to have some say in this.
Right, you can give your say, but we still, we still, we still decide.
Well, I understand that, but you guys don't see the value every day out there like that, so.
Well, I think there's not really a lot that has to matter with the preliminary discussion, like I said, you can kind of keep awards out, and you can keep hashing on it, and like I said, the idea, just to remember, especially, I mean, with you Dan, since it's your first budget cycle, and just not trying to top down and up, but the idea always is, is at least the preliminary, if it comes in high, you can't raise it after a certain point, but you can always lower it until the final point, so the idea has always kind of been to come in really high in the beginning, you make sure you're fulfilling all your needs you think you want, or your needs and your wants, and then you go through and you cut the wants out to try and make a budget, so that's where I, you know, even at this point, spending too much time rehashing something that can easily be rehashed again and again. I'd say probably just keep aware of that, and we'll start seeing what a final budget looks like, I mean, the preliminary budget always looks awful. It's always terrible because we don't really cut anything, and then you get a look at how things are, and you start, you start making decisions, so.
Well, correct, but our preliminary budget only went up sixty-one thousand from using.
Right, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything's going to change.
So, like, I'm, I guess I'm requesting the same thing that Sheriff Sanders got, was we need to start increasing our wages so we get more people to apply here.
Right, yeah.
That's our, that's our downfall right now, we can't get anybody to apply, so. I guess if you want to implement, if we change those two and we implement the changes today, and we agree on it, we should move forward and because it, it's not going to affect this year's budget, because we're well, well far away from our top budget line, so we wouldn't even have to amend the budget at the end of the year.
Well, I think again, for the sake of time here, um, we're really not in dispute with any of the equipment operators, are we?
The only thing, what are you, what are you advertising for now, as far as wage for?
No, it's starting at twenty dollars an hour, so it's forty-one thousand dollars a year.
So, that, we're going to have to up that somehow.
Well, I think that's where Skylar kind of has this part figured out, with the grades and steps for the equipment operator one, now, see, kind of the same thing like Gary, yeah, he's kind of got his job description and his his grading setup, so if you were bringing in a equipment operator two with a C D L, for example, and you're at a grade eight between one and four, then obviously some experience, so.
What kind of wage?
Because they don't require the C D L.
No, it's just that's the job description that is specific.
Require C D L license?
Uh, we should, yeah, like, we do, but we, sometimes you have to take.
Take what you get.
Take what you get.
Well, you're really not requiring it, if you have a job description that says non-C D L, you're just making.
Well, that's for a different scale. That's just in case we end up with one less.
Right.
Because the one, the two others that don't have C D Ls currently are in that same pay scale of, in the sevens, so.
So, a new person really basically looking at around fifty-five thousand for starting wage.
Yep, fifty-five to sixty thousand, basically.
Whatever, I have no problem with that, I did, I didn't have a problem.
So, yeah, the starting, the starting salary for a operator two with a C D L at the lowest point would be twenty-six dollars an hour, so. That's basically what's the kind of the starting.
I think that's the problem around, just go somewhere.
Right, well, that's what I mean, and then the non-C D L one would be less even, so you're, you're still probably in that twenty-two to twenty-five range for an equipment operator without a C D L starting out, and then the equipment two with a C D L, and then there's summer help and C D L and non-C D L, so, I mean, you've got it scaled out, so. So, I guess the big thing really to pick on or, or to approve would be to approve the page where he's got the grades and steps on everything, so. If you want to make any adjustments, you essentially would do right there. This attachment E is the page here, that he's kind of got everything spelled out, he's got everything from the summer help all the way up to the road superintendent, so. If you want to make adjustments, you would basically just make it on that, you know, if you want someone's grade or step or something to change or whatever, but.
So, just for the common guy to come in?
Like, summer help or full-time?
I would say it's full-time.
Would be a seven, grade seven, step one through four.
Well, that's part of the non-C D L there.
Right, well, that's what he said, just a common guy, which I assume is.
Grade seven.
One through four.
So, yeah, minimum fifty-dollar reward.
Yeah, well, you can go to hourly on the bottom, it's twenty-six dollars an hour to twenty-seven sixty-four.
What do you get hourly?
That's kind of the starting, the bottom one's hourly, and the top one's the annual salary.
Oh, okay.
So, if you want to know hourly or annual salary, that's it.
I don't, I, we're not going to get anybody for less than twenty-six bucks an hour, I don't think, or too much anymore nowadays.
Well, like I said, I.
Just some old operator.
I mean, well, we got a few guys, we got some temporary guys, right, that you brought, you brought.
You know, temporary guys helping out, but temporary is not a solution, or.
Right, no, but I mean, currently, you got. Right, no, but I mean, currently you got a couple temporary guys and there might be a few more coming on if we can find some people, so.
How many guys could you use yet?
Well, we, we budgeted, well, we need two full-times to replace the guys who are short, and then one additional. That's what we've always been going for.
So at least three people.
Yeah, three full-time.
Well, my suggestion for this, so that these guys can move forward with listing this job either, is we either need to approve what he's written or make changes to it. And that promotion will be basically ratified, so we can do the same thing we did with the sheriff's department, where we can start listing these jobs at a prospective pay, so. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Well, we did it for the sheriff's department. I think we're gonna have to do it here too, if we wanted to get somebody to come in.
No, that, I, like I said, I'm pretty with the pay, pay increase.
What do you think?
But there's certain that I won't vote for, you know, I'm not gonna vote for this with the whole pay increase the way it is. If there's adjustments made for it, yeah, but not the way it is, I'm not voting for it.
I won't support you on some of this here.
Well, make a motion to make an amendment, guys. That's my point. Like, it's, it's time to keep moving on this, so make an amendment. I mean, if you're not, I mean, if we're in agreement on ninety-some percent of it, it shouldn't be that hard. So let's make an amendment on some of these grades and steps and let's get it approved so we can keep moving.
Okay, I'll make an amendment that, I think, Skyler, the way you got, you know, your wage increase where it is, like the lower John and Gar to seventy-two, just so like the low U, somewhere around there.
Well, I think I would work it in more like you were gonna, I mean, find a.
Or do the Gar's men more, constatative more.
Find a graded step that you think would work with it. That way we can just amend this one page. So if you're, if you have a specific wage in mind related to like a step and a grade here, so we can correlate to this attachment E, then we can all that simpler.
So you guys are looking at this grade. Are you looking at the one, I, I don't know which one you guys.
With all these pain rates.
Well, I'm looking at the one that you gave me here now, the PAMs and the R's.
What's the total?
You're looking at PAMs?
Well, this is the one I was told with PAMs.
At the one B?
It's the way it's.
That was Pam's recommendation. What you have, Dan. The one that he's looking at is what the department's recommendations, the PAMs have together. Am I correct?
We don't have a label on it, so they don't necessarily.
Well, she had, there was a letter attached to it.
Right.
That said, that was, that was what the department had directed the date we were. So having, when you're changing things, we should find the right.
So this one that says sheriff's office proposed employee grade step, right? That was the one the employees put together.
What, what's the total on there altogether? Is it like three-hundred-and-so much thousand?
Three oh eight.
Okay, that's the one that the department heads.
Meaning Skyler's here.
Sent in to Pam, and that was a ticket back. Is that the one you guys looked at and amended then?
And then there's one that was submitted by Pam Biner, correct?
Right.
At one oh three over twenty-four, nine five one.
When you're making these changes, you should find the step, the, the one you're using and make changes from that, cause otherwise it's so confusing.
Anyway, it's just too many different.
It's just a learning curve, guys. You'll get over it. It's fine.
Either we use Pam Biner's or we use the, the county stuff.
Right. One or the other, and then if you're gonna, let's say you're gonna make changes, when you make your changes.
And if the county hits.
I think with all the Pam Biner's here, is more realistic, in my opinion. This is my opinion from what I actually knew coming in.
Which one did you use for the sheriff's department?
It's irrelevant, dealing with different departments.
That was, no, he's talking about the same pay scale here with that one. Well, Gary, Gary used.
I think Gary used the one that you had, right?
Pam Biner's, I think.
You used Biner's, didn't you?
Yeah, the only change that I made was that if you go to a grade, that's one I believe.
Well, you used the same numbers.
Well, I didn't quite.
Yeah.
It was pretty damn cool.
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, he thought the recommendations, the values, like, that's the way you guys gotta remember. So Pam made recommendations of certain deals. Gary might have made adjustment to the recommendations, but he's still using the same.
Pay scale.
The same chart, the same numbers.
Is in, rather than trying to focus, I guess, like an interrupter, on a grade and step right now. Your, your discussion, like with me and even with Skyler's department itself, focus on that. And if you decide and you all agree on his specific salary, then they can be looked at grade and step after that. What I'm trying to make the two mesh right now may not be very.
It's hard to do, yeah.
So you, once you decide and agree on a salary for whoever today, then go back and we can look at grade and steps before the end of the year. I think would be a lot easier. Correct, Marlon?
Yes, that, that would make so much more sense, cause when I put the proposal together, I need dollars amount. That's what I need, the dollars.
I, I wouldn't focus so much on grade and steps today. Focus on the salaries and what you agree to or what you all can agree to. And then we approach grades and steps in a month or two.
I agree.
So just to be clear, there's one.
Okay, the one that you have.
Which one? Well, they, they look the same, so when you say which one you have, so there's one here.
The one that you have there is that, it's for that three-hundred-and-so much thousand. Okay, right?
Okay, well, that's this one. That's the one that the department heads submitted.
Okay, that's the one that the department head sent, and she put it together.
And then.
She came back and said the one she recommended, which is this one.
Right, but I have two of them, so just one, the original one, and then one, cause one starts out and then one's a little bit higher. I think so. Is that the second one she did? Did she?
No, she read that.
I mean, these two are identical.
They should move age off the one.
Did she read beyond the age? She was a different one.
Right.
Well, this is her. This is her. Because there's a syrup.
I don't know whether the flavor's better. This is kinda dumb to deal with here.
Okay.
This is three hundred and eighty thousand.
So on her ten, four, it's fifty-three, and on this pen, four, it's seventy-three, yeah.
So what, what you guys should really do is determine the salaries. Do you want the guys to make up there and then move.
Then you can change the grade toward.
Sit down together and.
Well, you need to make sure you use the same sheet that Gary used, since we already ratified that for this sheriff's department. So if you went off of PAM's, then that's the one you gotta use for road.
So which one is that?
This one. The one oh three over twenty-four.
That's the one then. That's the one, right? No, one oh three, that's, okay, that's one Pam. Yeah, that's one Pam Biner that are dealing.
That's what she came there.
So we're gonna use that one? Just put this one off aside.
Did somebody pay for that one in the research?
I think that today, trying to determine what grade and depth are gonna be at is not what you're trying to do. Just what is, what is the base salary with the position going forward? Once you lock that in, in, inside of, then you can look at the salary and assign an increase and appropriate step to it. Because of the sliding scale there. To take those salaries and try and fit in there, and like you said, it's confusing because three or four different versions of that grade and step.
I'm just looking at comparisons alone, because I don't think that, I don't have that.
Skyler, do you have the salaries listed?
I don't have the salaries listed. I just put them under grades and steps, I guess.
But which is, if we go off of these grades and steps you got here and determine what the salaries are here, that's what we should go off of.
Yeah, but see, now you're already using the wrong sheet again. That's the one Skyler dropped. I don't know why, I don't know why this isn't labeled better. This is frustrating. I'm, I'm flipping the table here.
So.
Well, it's totally frustrating.
Okay, so if he's got, if he's got an equipment operator, okay, let's see, let's see.
We're gonna look at it grades now.
Okay, but say, I'm gonna look at a grade.
Right, you can correlate it to a map, as long as you use Pam Biner's recommendation.
So he's got seven.
Here's what I hear.
Equipment operator's got a grade seven, so on her, it's grade seven. And then a step one to four.
That's what I would want to have.
So like fifty-seven thousand dollars, fifty-seven thousand. His.
Skyler, do you have the sheet that you want the salary? That right in front of you?
The, the stay grade one?
Yeah.
The step and grade?
Does that have the salaries listed there too that you want?
Well, this would actually be less.
If you do, we can have a copy, make copies for everybody, and we can go through it from there. I don't know.
But that may be more confusing, and I say that because I think Skyler's correct and I'm wrong. Your grade and depth was a little different than what Pam had recommended, right?
Yes, it's very different than what you recommended.
That's what I said. If you, if you decide on a salary, whether that, if not at the day or a hundred dollars.
We readjust it on the grade and.
You apply that to a grade and depth later. The salaries are what, what is really the issue here.
Exactly, yeah. We have to decide the salary we want. You can only adjust the grade and the step to whatever you want. You just gotta, we gotta decide what salary we're willing to pay.
And then once we can, once we know those salaries, once they're locked in, then you can take and look at the proposed grade and steps and make those adjustments and combine that with the salaries, so they all make sense.
Right.
You, you, you try.
But then you're not gonna try to step up the salaries based on these grades.
Right, if you're, if you're gonna come up with a grade and step today prior to any salary, you're putting up, you're putting.
Hard perils.
And, and, yeah, you gotta do the salary first, then the grade and depth to make that work. When I looked at the salaries, I looked at the parameters of what Pam Biner had for what is the minimum salary, the maximum salary. Made sure that those figures that I presented are within those boundaries. I wasn't too concerned about grade and step. That can be worked out later. Once you know what the salaries are, you can then make a grade and step thing based on what Pam has, using those formulas. Cause that's the nice thing about what she did. She gave us the tool and the blueprint with doodles. We can, we can make those adjustments, because between each step, there's a two percent increase, automatically increases it as you go. And you don't want somebody at, if there's eighteen steps and a grade, you don't want somebody that's been working here for two years at a step seventeen, cause they're gonna top out within the next two or three years.
And there's no way you can make an increase of fifty-two percent in salary increase on the way some of these graphs show it.
Right.
And how in the hell can you?
Well, that's, that's the thing. You gotta come up with the salary first and then apply the grade and step to that. You can't come up with a grade and step and say, okay, you're going to be a step grade, a grade seven, step seven, and we don't know what your salary is yet. You can't do that. We give you your salary, assign the salary, now we're gonna assign you an appropriate grade and step.
Yeah, but I think that's where, that was, I mean, the reason for the increase was because these are, these, some of these positions are different grades due to their job description. Though that's something you gotta remember too, though. Like, it's not like they were just given a huge wage increase without any, that there was a job description and each description created another grade. That's what we talked about before. So that's why some of these have a significant increase too, so that's.
So all deputies would fall into the category of grading. The only thing that's gonna separate a deputy one and a deputy two are the steps. All grade eight, but it's gonna be experienced and trained, and it's gonna give the other guy maybe two steps more than the other.
Same in your department.
Okay, so now, so what we need is an hourly wage for equipment operator with a non-C D L price, right? Or wage, and we need a wage for an operator with a C D L. And summertime help with a C D L and summertime help with a non-C D L. That's what we're really gonna need.
Yeah, so with a pay grade structure, so which correlates to our salary increase.
So it's the hourly wage for one of these things.
Right, but that's the big question. Was that Pam's sheet or was that your sheet? I mean, that's where the.
Why is it Pam's sheet anyway? Cause she didn't get any more information, so how could she put a recommendation?
Well, we gotta use something that the entire court house can use though too. That's the thing, the favorability is using.
That's the one that the whole department heads in the, the increases. Okay, so that's the number three.
That's the one you went on.
That's the one.
Are you based your stuff?
The way from us is accounting.
I don't know.
Because we didn't honor her. She was trying to do for us as accounting.
No.
Listen, I'm just speaking just from Newgag coming in.
No, I think there's other issues there.
Well, I think the big question here is just, like you said, are we using the old scale, the new scale, the, the department head scale, Pam's scale? I mean, that's where, I don't know why these aren't labeled better. But. It's normal to feel like this though, guys. We're, we're doing something different. It's not gonna be easy the first time you go around. It never was gonna be, but that's why it never got done for years, and that's why it needs to get done now. So we just need to be straight about which structure we're using and go off of that. Say, we already made a decision with the sheriff's department based on.
So the sheriff's department, you, you went with his recommendation, correct?
Right, yeah.
So then that would be, if you look at his recommendations, and if you look at the one that was submitted by all the department heads, which the bottom number is three oh eight, that correlates.
That correlates to your attachment E, you'll let you use right here.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I think for the sake of argument, I think we should determine which one we're gonna use now. But you kinda already did, you said the president's what you did, the sheriff's department. You already used what, what the department heads recommended.
This is extreme, period.
So, and from what I gather, we're only, we're only in disagreement on one guy's salary here. Correct?
Correct.
So really, all we have to do is figure out what we wanna put that guy's salary at.
Yeah, I mean, my work, you know, my, my recommendation would leave you at your salary seventy-five, lower Gar, couple to seventy-two, and then put John at seventy.
We got operators who make it eighty thousand bucks a year, really?
Gee.
Yeah, I wanna see.
On Skyler's dealer, the twenty-twenty-four budget. Right?
But the equipment operator's been. See, that's where this, that's, because that's no longer an equipment operator. We were trying to reclassify his job. Why it got put in there as an equipment operator, I guess, is he's no longer an equipment operator.
And he could no longer step to play some of these guys and run a blade or whatever, or push against the wall, right?
No, he can't, he could still, cause he, he didn't, just because we changed his job title doesn't mean we wipe his brain from running equipment ever again. It's just, you're changing his job title. So, I mean, you can change his job title for the equipment operator slash shop and facilities manager if you want. So that way he can still fall under that category if you'd like. We have to quit.
Quit what?
We have to quit banking on that guy. We're moving that position. We're moving evidence counting forward. Like, is the audit, we're now getting an audit every year, correct?
But at the same token, he, yeah, he, he was basically hired to play roads and stuff at the first part.
So this is, that's not a personal deal, is it? Or what is this, his personal?
Well, I mean, cause the question it kinda seems like is, is, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about a position, it's no different than the sheriff's department. If you're gonna compare it to positions where you hire someone and is a beginning deputy, and they eventually become the chief deputy.
Right.
They now are in a more supervisory role, secondary to the sheriff, and that page should reflect that. These positions we're talking about, which are the top three, which are more your foreman type positions, and then your superintendent. Those are your, they're your, I mean, they're your department head, and then they're your second-in-command underneath there. It's no different. So just cause you hired a guy as an equipment operator and you expect him to run equipment sometimes, but for the most part, he's taken on other roles that are different. The job description is more responsibility than just an equipment operator, and that's no different than another department going from X amount employee to chief of that type of employee, same as that. So that's where, I mean, that's where the conversation is. You can argue about the different, you know, if you think the pay is too much, but that pay should reflect more than. You can argue about the different, you know, if you think the pay is too much, but that pay should reflect more than an equipment operator. If that's the way the description was created, and that's what the job is for.
That's why I said, you know, I think Skyler should be at seventy-five, GARR about seventy-two, and John at seventy. He'd get more than an equipment operator, I totally agree with that, you know?
We can justify a twenty to sixty thousand dollar pay increase per employee.
I honestly, I honestly do think in a lot of ways, we are, we're, I mean, I'm, I think.
Isn't that gonna improve the productivity?
Well, I think it'll, it'll improve recruiting guys, so we can actually have enough guys to staff the department and actually get some of the work done, so I would say, I mean, obviously you can't make a guarantee, all the guys you hire are good employees, and they go out and improve their own system with that, going from five to eight employees, I mean, that's the expectation. Or we can keep doing the same thing we've been doing, and we can keep having the same results. I think that's the definition of insanity.
No, we need to, it has, right, yeah, without doubt.
I mean, I know, I know it's shocking, that's the conversation we've been having for weeks. We had a whole group of people in here from Cattail and Westfield telling us, we gotta do something, this is, but commissioners don't blade the roads, and we don't arrest the bad guys, but.
But we can't, we can't, we can't hire somebody off the street for thirty dollars an hour when our operators are only getting.
I can tell you.
They're only getting thirty-one, what are you gonna do then?
We gotta supply these guys with the, with the tools and the, and the, and the money to go out and make these departments better. If we do that and there's no improvement, then you handle that, whether it's, you know, get rid of guys, bring different guys, I don't know, guys and gals, I should say, I say guys all the time, but. I mean, well, I know, but my point is, is you have to create something where there's room for improvement. If we go through, we raise the wages, we're providing good equipment, we're, and we're still not getting the results, then you evaluate that on a different basis, you know what I mean? You gotta start making some changes, and the one change I think we can all agree on is that we're, we've been behind, and we can't be afraid to set the market. I know that's always a frustrating thing, but, I mean, if we're overpaying more than, or we're paying more than a neighboring county that's comparable to us, we're gonna have to start doing some of those things at times, and they'll probably catch up to us, and it's just kinda the way it is, I mean, it's, I really don't, I, like you said, I don't, I don't like it, it's not comfortable, but comfortable has us in a position where we're understaffed in several very key departments, and I'm just gonna say it again, the people want the department staffed.
You know, Dan, it wasn't fair before when all these people were in here, you know, all those other working for years, but getting, after six months, they make the same as the top guy that worked every ten years. That wasn't fair. Now we're starting this thing, and now we have to kinda distance it a little bit, you know what I mean? If I was, but they're, but getting, you know, get a little more, but now we can't find nobody to start out at twenty dollars an hour anymore, so what do we do? So we can't start out somebody, if we started them out at twenty-six, twenty-eight bucks, well, the guys that were there for ten years, are they still supposed to work for twenty-six, twenty-eight bucks? You know what I mean?
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's the reason why this hasn't happened for a long time, because you get to this point where everybody's afraid to make that change, they're afraid to make that leap, 'cause it's, it's big, it's.
Such a big leap.
It is, it's huge, and that's why it's always been, wow, just, we'll talk about it again, and wow, and then next year comes, and you don't get, you, you don't get new employees, and you keep, the old employees get burned out, 'cause they're doing more of the work, 'cause you're not bringing the guys in, it's a, it's a cycle that needs to get broken, and I, I, I can tell you from all the people I've talked to, they, they agree with this, they're unhappy about it, I don't think anybody's just, like, super ecstatic about having to totally re, right? I mean, probably looking at a taxing reason, but they also recognize that we can't keep doing what we've been doing, so.
And I think once we get going, the step thing, this should be a pretty good thing, isn't it?
I think it'll be easy, it's just, yeah, we're, we're a big learning curve right now.
It's just starting out.
Wasn't fun learning how to ride a bike either, but then when it was done, it was great, you know, and now you can still ride a bike, right? I think, right?
No.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Okay, well, let's, let's make some kind of a motion here and vote on something.
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion to keep Skyler at seventy-five, put GARR at seventy-two, and John at seventy, and leave the rest of them the way they are.
So what are we gonna do with the pay scale, though, as far as starting getting somebody in, just use that?
Well, I think the best thing, like, with the equipment operators, like, I don't think anybody's been in dispute with ninety percent of that, if the main thing was just at the top end, you're gonna sort out.
At the top end, yeah. The other one, don't see the same, whatever he recommended for starting the hardware, the important hardware, yeah. Is it adjusting the three, that way, and then the foreman, and then John, yeah, the top three.
Well, Commissioner Hall was made a motion, and that is to basically accept attachment E that Skyler has presented with the amendments that Skyler's salary is increased to seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Garry Schmidt is at seventy-two thousand dollars per year, and John Schreibach is at seventy thousand dollars per year. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Not hearing any motion dies for life of a second. What's the next motion? 'Cause we've got something going on at two o'clock here, unless you wanna table us.
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, with this short amount of time, and Skyler's still gotta come in and discuss some other stuff, why don't we just table this for the moment? And we'll bring, we'll bring it back here at, um, we'll probably have you right away at like two twenty after this next again item, and then we can go over the remainder of your own stuff, and then we'll shuffle that. Thanks, Skyler. You guys got everybody here for the airport? For yours?
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners, my name is Shane Steiner, I'm with K L J, uh, represent, uh, the airport, and I've been personally working with the airport for the last, last fifteen years here, so. What they ask is for the, uh, the commission today is consider, um, provide the airport with two, two county mills, uh, starting, starting with next year, and that's going to help, um, help their, both their immediate, uh, need for the larger project, we have one on, which I'll touch on there shortly, uh, then also the continuing, uh, the continuing need for the airport for essentially for upkeep, um, for, for maintenance and just for kind of projects that they, they haven't been able to recover without, um, with additional funding, so. Uh, the, the airport, uh, project that we did, uh, for this year was a reconstruction of their apron. Their, their apron pavements have a PCI value between twenty-five and thirty-five. A, any value under forty is considered failing, so, and this is really the last piece of infrastructure at the airport. We just, uh, milled and overlaid the runway, uh, put in a new, new, uh, extended apron a few years ago, and a partial, um, hangar taxi lane, so this is really kinda the last piece of hard infrastructure that's left, um, that's pivotal, uh, to the, to the airport, so that apron serves, um, the, the flying public that come in for, uh, fueling. So as part of the apron will be, we'll be putting in the concrete, hard sand, uh, for their fueling, uh, also for the FEO, that's out there, that's, uh, the direct sap, access, and then also for, uh, air ambulance, um, that's, that's where they access and go in and out from the road, and where the helicopter or the fixed plane, uh, comes out, so. We, we bid that project, um, earlier this spring, and like with anything, came in, came in a little higher. The total estimate project for that, for that was, our estimate was one point five million, the bid came at one point eight, uh, we only got one bid. So the airport elected to, um, uh, reject, uh, the bid, we'll be rebidding it, uh, next year. Hopefully get, uh, some few more favorable bids, and hopefully some, some younger contractors. So, so that's what we're looking at for the, for the project, uh, for next year. As far as, um, additional funding, so the, the airport gets, uh, what's it called, A I P, or entitlement funding, they get a hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, each year, and they can bank that up for a maximum, uh, four years or six hundred thousand dollars. And, um, the airport's done a good job of leveraging that, and they've banked up, so, uh, as of this year, this is that, four years, six hundred thousand. Starting next year, um, they would start to lose a hundred fifty thousand if it's, if it's not utilized, so. That, again, that kinda goes with the importance of being able to get some additional, uh, funds for the mills to help, help fund with that project. In addition to that, um, there's some, uh, maintenance of equipment out there, so that the airport has what's called A W O S, Weather Observation System. They have a, what's called a silometer go out, um, last year that was a thirty thousand dollar, um, item that they had to replace. As you can imagine, most of that equipment is in that larger, uh, dollar range. Uh, they have a, uh, twenty-four hour, uh, card reader, uh, fuel system. It will be a requirement within the next, uh, two years to have a self-service reader that can read chips. Uh, currently, that technology is not available according to Fuel Master, it's a beta testing right now, but that's gonna be another fifty thousand dollar requirement that they have to do. Anything like that, or it's, uh, maintenance of existing equipment, the FAA or the federal, um, um, agencies do not cover that expense, so that is all, all on the airport, so. So by using our, giving the additional mills, again, it'll, you know, help cover with this next important project, but then moving forward with maintaining, which they'll be in, is in maintaining, well, maintaining their pavements, um, that they already have, the crack seal and seal coats, new painted markings, that kinda stuff. And then the electrical equipment, we just replaced all the electrical equipment, I think, three years ago. So we got new lights, uh, beacon wind cone, um, but again, with, you know, just regular routine maintenance stuff, so. Um, and then, so then with the, the additional, any additional, uh, shortfall, uh, the airport authority is able to go to the North Dakota Air Knox Commission and request anywhere from fifty, uh, to ninety percent cost share of that shortfall. Uh, one of the things that, the question gets asked on all those, um, on all those requests is what, uh, the airport authority or the airport gets for, you know, for city mills and county mills, uh, and in what efforts they have taken to secure local funding before they, before they go to the state, so they're already receiving the maximum of four, four city mills. So, you know, the question was asked when we went, the, the airport did, uh, request for, uh, funding of the project that I mentioned that we had already bid, and they asked, well, how many county mills are you getting? And, you know, they currently get none, so that was their ask of, well, you know, not being able to at least seek out, you know, additional local funding to help bridge that gap, that was kinda, was, was a chip, chip against them when they went for that request, so. Going into this next, next year with a request, knowing there is gonna be a shortfall, but being able to come back and say, hey, yeah, we were able to get, you know, one or two county mills, that, that goes a long way in, uh, in persuading the, the Air Knox Commission for, for additional funding in that respect, so.
Anything else? Can I do this?
Yep, so, and then, uh, for the project, so for the, I, I mentioned the, the one point eight million is, is what our, is what our estimated cost is for, for the entire project for next year. Taking out, um, all the federal funding, and, uh, the, the state matches five percent, that's, that's, uh, pretty much an automatic. Uh, so what we're looking at, um, for a shortfall is roughly seven hundred thousand. We would request and ask, uh, of a fifty-fifty cost shares, but we think that the Air Knox Commission would be agreeable, uh, to this project, so that would leave the airport with roughly a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, shortfall that, uh, that they would have to be, so of that one point eight million, roughly three hundred and fifty thousand is, is what they're, is what they're responsible would be, um, as of our estimates as of today going, going into next year.
Does that all do it at the same time, or is that paid over, is that like a cover, is that kinda like a federal aid project where you can plan it out over years, or?
Um, it would essentially all be due within the, probably within six months, so once you, once, once you get a grant from what the project starts, you know, you pay, you know, pay estimates, you know, for the contractor, so assuming that we would bid it next spring, contractor would start in May or June, it would go, you know, three months-ish of construction. It would be due essentially by the end of that, that fiscal year, so, yeah. Any other questions, I guess, on the, the financials or specifics of the project or anything, I'll let, uh, Randy talk a little bit about, uh, a little more. The need for the, the airport in general, but any other.
Hello, I'm Randy Muddinger, I am the, uh, city council appointed member to the airport board. Currently, the, the city has been for a long time taxed, the four mills are just ten thousand dollars, and because of inflation, and everything, that just doesn't reach anymore, as you were, when we walked in, you were discussing labor, we need to work on contracts for maintenance, we need, uh, to maintain the place. Where else are we looking, we need, uh, money for maintenance of buildings, all that stuff's gotten more expensive. We have raised the storage rent, and anybody having an airplane out there, we've raised their rent to keep them hangers. We've raised the fees that aerial operators have to play, pay. Agriculture, there's between a quarter million and half million acres sprayed, uh, sprayed out of the airport, and now we are becoming a big regional deal for medical. Uh, we, uh, Lynn Osso serves the heritage community, and so any planes that come in, and a plane that's fixed wing, each GPS has to land here, can't, for now, land at other airports out there in Bismarck, and, uh, I'm glad the airport's here and that it's not somewhere else, so we don't have to transport. And, you know, our ambulance, uh, is gonna, they're starting to work with other ones, Wishit, et cetera, we get patients from Wishit dropped off at the airport here. We're starting to serve a big, and can't put a value on the medical need, and, you know, the, the medical comes, we have an elder, the community, agriculture, accidents, and recreation. You know, we have a lot, that's just how it is. So, uh, the city portion of the property tax is, is clearly not enough, uh, the ten thousand we need. Otherwise, without more funding, we will start to lose a hundred fifty thousand that we get, which we get, we only need to raise between five and ten percent, sometimes fifteen, twenty. But, I mean, we're getting funding from the federal, we're left to give some of that money back. So that's plain and simple. Expenses are going through the roof on us, and, uh, we need the support from, from the county. The community of Linton, I believe, is doing its part, has for a long time, and, uh, the airport is for the county, and also it's starting to become bigger than that, we're going into Capital and Macintosh County. Thank you for your time, any questions?
No, the only thing is, I, I mean, how is the county responsible for the airport?
How's what?
How is the county responsible for there?
The airport is basically the city manages the airport.
They own.
Yes, but the funding, uh, the city's still gonna run, or the airport board and the city's still, would run the budget. What's going to happen, our budget is due August tenth, so the city's going to approve the airport budget that, that there's funding to provide, because you can't spend money, if the, if it's not in the budget, you can't spend it, and if we don't get more income or more revenue, we will just have to turn down projects that we did this year. And we're a federally, federal airport, uh, it's very valuable, we're the only small town airport that's federal. I think it's important, it's important for the community, but, uh, it all rests on local funding, and if you do not have local funding from city and county, you stand, uh, less a chance of getting skate loan, that's just how it is, they're asking, what are you doing that we need help, and then it goes to federal. It's plain and simple how it is.
Well, you should probably put that on the ballot and let the people vote on if they would support the.
I understand putting on the ballot, one thing about the ballot, once the people vote, it stays that way. We may need three mills in a year, we don't know, do you guys know what your tax increases are gonna be? We can't raise, we can't increase property taxes to increase, increase revenue as far as an airport. You go to the people, and then you can't change it unless the people vote in. I believe that they're, the people elect county commissions and city councils to make decisions like that, is our current situation.
Why isn't it an Evans County airport instead of a municipal airport? I'm just asking.
With a Linton.
That's, I just know that, that small town airports are run by the city. Langdon runs theirs, Mott runs theirs, that just does, and essentially you don't, you, you, you have a whole entire staff that's separate from the city, and they have a separate board, uh, which is not elected, and they do their own budget, that's how that works. Uh, we need to update the fuel systems, we're gonna cost between thirty and fifty thousand, that is a hundred percent our responsibility, and we have to do it. And so, without funding, we will simply have to, we can borrow some money, then it uses up our ten thousand, and our income uses up our income for some time, but we will have to do that to maintain the integrity of the airport that we are, so that planes can learn to use car controls, fuel up. Uh, you can't have a helicopter, you need medical helicopter company, fuel or fixment, plenty of fuel, and not get it, you have to have enough, up, up to date system, and ours is currently even. and not get it, you have to have enough to update the system, and ours is currently even. Any other questions? Thank you for your time. And for two mills, both in the county?
What would it be for? Was it two?
No, it's zero.
No, I mean before that. The county used to give before that, didn't they?
The only money the county has given is what the airport specifically comes and lost, $20,000 for X. For instance, if we would have to come to you and say, hey, we could put in a cartel, it's more than a cartel, but essentially that's what it is. And it costs them $35,000, we're 25 short. If we were to borrow money, come to you guys and get it.
I think we gave 20 or 25 thousand dollars a couple of years ago for your landing strip.
Yeah, for the lighting system, that's what it is. Yes, you have, and it was needed. And the lights need maintenance again. And building needs maintenance, for instance, inside our office, we need to work out there. Some flooring work, some roof work, and that's just going to...
The only problem I have is like you said, I mean, if the people vote on it, they would like it as a mill, well, that's something different. But there's all kinds of other small businesses that could use help too, and well, you can't really help everybody out in the county that...
On the medical side, you can say on the agriculture side, it's helping essentially farmers, but when you help agriculture, it drives an economy to a very good extent. The medical side, you can't put a price out and what that does. You don't know who's going to need it, you don't know how many times. And we hope we don't need it a lot, but you need medical services. And the way the medical industry is going, more people are transported to places, many ways away for the service we need. As institutions, medical institutions become more specific in what they do, we're going to see more businesses, Wishit, as I, Wishit and Linton, Osbornia are working together now on administrative, sharing and administering, all that things, and the Linton airports are free.
We have no landing pad at hospital for helicopters.
For helicopters, but to go to, the medical has to go a long distance, they can fix one airplane in the helicopter, and that has to land at a GPS.
Yeah, plus one of those incline weather, or if it's during the night, they have to use the GPS approach, so the helipad at the airport doesn't have the GPS approach like out there. So a lot of time, they're forced, and even if it's, even if it's the county, the medical hospitals and their aircraft require them by insurance to only fly interim approach. So therefore, they're, they can fly at the airport and that, that's it. So even at the, the thing we have in Bismarck, you know, that's why you'd be a lot of helicopters landing at the airport. Why don't they always land right on the airport? That's why they need to apply that GPS approach that are only available at the airport, so they have to fly in just like a normal plane.
So would you say that this mill increase, I mean, it would obviously benefit the airport, but really be benefiting the hospital as well, no?
And, yes.
I mean, that would probably be the big driver for...
Absolutely.
You can make the argument, you could raise fees with the agriculture side, they could maybe fund some of these things, but the hospital is probably going to be a big...
And as we have infrastructure that fails, you know, think about the $2 million project when we were at 1.8, it's a $2 million project. Even if we find 95% funding, 5% on $2 million is 100 grand, we don't have 100,000. And that's what the two mills would do.
So how many mills, how many mills does Linton Hospital get?
Up to five, they do five usually.
Ambulance gets two. I believe hospital gets five, ambulance gets two.
They can't ride it out of there somehow?
No. We, we're just the, the city is taxed, taxed in public.
Well, exactly. I kind of agree with Commissioner Ebbly on that. I think the airport is vital, I think it needs to be supported, but I think it's kind of along the same lines as the hospital ones were voted in, the ambulance ones were voted in. I think when you have extra mills like that, I really do think it probably should go to the ballot too. I mean, like I said, it does kind of create some boundaries with it, but at the same time, that's kind of the good side of it too, is because I have had people input from the last time, I believe it was about a year ago you guys were in here, and I have a lot of input from other people too that said they don't feel like they should pay for the airport. I had people that said that we should be, because like you said, you want to maintain your infrastructure, you have an airport, keep it up, fix it. I think it kind of is a perfect battleground for a ballot measuring effort regarding, because I still don't feel like it's... I mean, we already have our capped mills and we operate within our legal bounds, which are all state mandated or ballot initiatives. I don't feel like it's this body's position to create another mill. That's my belief, and it is not a disrespect to the airport, though I am 98% agreement with you, other than the creating of the mill.
From what I understand, of course, people can mandate the four mills, and then the county commission has the right to give the maximum of four. If go to the people, then to make sure, we should go to three or four mills. We, you know, things change, and there's no way to increase income. You guys can raise property taxes, the city can raise property taxes, and he's a school here. We're really bound by local funding.
Well, I just feel like if it's the kind of thing, I mean, it seems like when it was 911, some of these other things, when the info gets out there, people understand the importance of it, it generally tends to pass. I mean, some things they don't agree with, and that's kind of the, I mean, that's the only thing when it comes to a ballot measure for something like this, because I know the attitude is, is everybody views it as Linton's airport. That's probably an unfair generalization. I don't even truly believe that, because when you say a regional airport, the region is the county and other counties around it. Even other counties in another state, I don't disagree with that.
So when the agriculture, the farmers use that for spraying, do they pay a certain amount?
We make the applicator pay rent. We do not charge the farmer per day. We'll keep the economy, which that's not, we're not going there.
Well, but I mean, for every acre I spray, does it, do you charge a certain percentage?
No, we charge a flat fee.
Yeah, they just charge the applicator operating, but his rate is based on that.
A season per plane and then a plane per day, when they bring in more, it's a plane per day. Who's going to keep track? That becomes a, that we're not doing that. Don't have the people to do that. You know, it's not feasible. And then agriculture is great to have, we're glad we have the agriculture we have. And we got to keep that going, it drives the economy. And then we provide safety for the people here, and way of recreation is also... So if we charge farmers, should we charge somebody that has an injury from recreation to land at airport, get an ambulance or hospital, a plane to take someone? That isn't right, it's a public, when it comes to medical services, it's public. You don't know who's needed, who it's needed by. That's just how it is.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Well, basically, I believe you have until next month to decide, you have to have that decision made by...
August 10th.
Yeah, by August 10th, so you have next meeting to decide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Skylar's not back for the moment. Oh, there he is, see him at the chair. Well, the next one. So we have, looks like Marlis' budgets, a lot of the stuff is, pretty much it's all Marlis, other than extension. Brad coming in for VA officer?
Once it hits me, nobody else is coming in.
Okay, so actually, Kasia's the last one, so if we want to do your budget review right now, then...
Is that okay?
Yep.
I have heard that you have a one, so...
Sure, so you want to be quick?
I do.
Perfect.
With that being said, I encourage you all to study on the other projects before you...
Oh, my home bird.
All right, you've got your budget, and your budget review. The only changes for our budget are salaries. So salaries, only myself, are decided by the state. So that's where those numbers came from. And Ashley's, I left that number off currently as directed, just because she, well, with the new system, it was decided. So she's still in her probationary period, she started at the... And so her six-month review will be coming up, it's a ritual reminder for the summary that she was suggested, plus whatever is decided by the commission moving forward. But all the other long items, other than obviously, I've got to carry on returning to all that stuff. That changes each year, but I will put it in the office, but stay the same. I don't know if you have any questions, I think we'll item by item if you want.
Looks like everything's pretty much the same, other than just...
The salaries, the things that get adjusted and paid.
Great, so we solve the salary, the rest of it is completely... Yeah, the rest of it looks...
Yeah, I didn't increase any. Well, do you have questions? You know where to find me.
Thanks, Kasia.
All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Skylar? Now everything's out of the way. Are we discussing road responsibilities, or are we still hammering on the salary?
You got it, it's your deal.
Well, that thing like with Gary there, I mean, not nothing against, but it's just like, you know, that's what we hired him for. I don't know how to put those guys in their steps and categories and...
I don't either, I just agree with the person in charge makes more, and then the foreman, and so on. That's how every department runs it, and that's what I was just going by. I would just, you know, put his wage first, then the foreman next, and, you know, the next person, so. That's all I was doing, you know, the person in charge should be more.
So what do we have, just the salaries?
Yeah, well, basically, the salaries of the superintendent and the road foreman, and then what were you going to have for, what's job official title under?
Equipment and facilities manager.
Equipment and facilities manager. Basically, you're going to just...
You can slap job foreman.
Okay, so basically, shop foreman, road foreman, and road superintendent. So those are basically the equipment operator thing, I think we're pretty well, pretty well got squared away, so. I guess the question is, is where do you want to put these three guys? I mean, you said Gary brought forward a motion there.
You would have loved the salaries to $18,000 to $19,000 on some of these guys on a salary per year.
Well, right, well, I mean, this salary is always a base salary, this, you know, it depends on the overtime and stuff too, so yeah. I mean, it's not about long, it's about...
I just think it's a hell of a, hell of an increase.
It is, I think anybody's disagreeing with you. But I think it's a part of the conversation that we've been having for a while, I just don't, I mean...
We've just been, we've just been kind of low...
We've been, because I can tell you the year COVID, I remember that would have been my, that would have been my second budget cycle as a commissioner. We didn't give raises to anybody. You know, I mean, we didn't, because we didn't know what was going to happen. We didn't know that they were going to crack open the, I shouldn't say the piggy bank, the printing press. And everybody got money, nobody knew that, you know. We would have known ahead of time that there was going to be PPP money and ARPA money and all this. You know, we would have probably done raises like anybody else did, but we didn't know. We were, everybody was kind of worried on how things were going to go, we didn't know raises.
I just don't feel like you can give these kind of wage increases in one chunk.
But how do you get somebody to apply?
These guys that are here all applied, and when they did apply for these positions, they knew what their salaries were. And they were jacking them 5 to 10 to 15 to 20 grand.
Well, we don't, someone else has got, I mean, that's the one, that's the argument about it, I mean...
I mean, ever since I've been on, I think it was always 2% wage.
3%.
I try to think, we never ever...
Five was kind of the max.
Well, two or three don't cut it anyway. Not unless your wage is way up there, then two or three is good, but when you're way low, two or three doesn't matter.
That's all we did for years, so, I mean, you know, but now we can't get nobody coming to door.
Well, you know what, and it's a perfectly valid opinion, you're not wrong, Dan, you're not. But I'm just telling you, like I said, I've been going around all summer, especially after the horrible winter we had, and people want to know what we're doing to fill these vacancies and to try and get these roads better. We can't get these roads better with the staff we have, we don't have enough guys. If you do this step, like we said, and we fill the staff, and we're still not seeing the improvements, then we either look at equipment, or we look at, you know, the performance of these guys.
And how are you going to jack these guys away from their status and take 20 grand away from them? Because they're not doing the job.
Well, I don't talk about taking 20 grand away from them, there's just certain, you might have to let somebody go if that's the case, but that's something you worry about down the road. The step we have to take, the step I've been told by lots of people, and not just people I barely know, I mean, people that, people I talked to, people that talk to me that call me, want to know about things going on, probably the same people calling you, a lot of the people that have been in this room several times, Westfield, Cattail, Braddock, all of them, they want to see improvements.
I asked for a plan from some of these people that you're referring to. They want a plan, and I don't have a plan. And I reached out to our superintendent for a plan that following Thursday, and I never got a plan. It was going to go in that Friday, I never got a plan back from him. Two weeks later, I contacted him, asked him for a plan, and sent him my email, and I still didn't get a plan. That's why I've got an issue with some of this stuff and some of these increases. Because I feel we are the employer of a lot of these, of all these guys.
There we go, I mean, we got a... We're a responsibility for their money.
That's why I'm just very hesitant on some of this stuff.
Yeah, well, I mean...
And that's just my opinion, okay?
Well, I can tell you one thing, I mean, in just the defense of that a little bit too, is it's hard to come up with a plan when you maybe don't even have enough guys to come through with a plan, and I know...
At least just then tell me.
Right, because I mean, I can tell you too, I mean, I tried contacting contractors after our last meeting too, when we talked about it, I didn't even get a call back from a lot of them. I mean, we're kind of on our own with a lot of this stuff, we're going to have to staff our own crews, because even relying on contractors and stuff, everybody's busy or they're shorthanded.
What's, can I ask you a question? Do we have a contractor that's willing to come in and come onboard with gravel trucks?
Yes.
And who is it?
It's RTF Sharon out of Jamesville.
Sheminsky, right? With how many trucks?
I talked to him this morning, he wasn't, he was 98% sure he could bring 12.
12 trucks or 12 pieces of equipment?
12 trucks.
Are they going to load two then?
No, we're...
We're going to load, okay.
Do we have a plan in each one of these districts that we want to call it a blade operator areas? Blade out with the loads dumped at where we need it. So it isn't a beehive and so unorganized that we're totally spinning on our wheel.
Yes, and that's up for our discussion after this, if you want to...
That's just my questions, correct, do you?
Yeah, we want to discuss this now, because it'll probably get into length here, we want to finish this salary increase first. I mean, I can answer that question now if you want me to.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, we have a, we're going to start with the Fegel A road, we got them for one week. So the first one we're going to hit is 96th Street, which goes through all in Westfield. And then after that, we're going to, we've got them numbered, whatever the second, like, first priority, second priority. And we have them for one week, so 96 is going to take a lot, because that's a long stretch. We're going to do the Fegel A road all the way down to the state line, because you...
How much of the weight are you going to throw in?
We're going to dump, it varies, because some spots don't need a lot of it, just need a little bit. We're going to do it 500 yards a mile. If we need to double up on that on a bad spot, then it's going to be a thousand yards a mile.
Are these roads shaped and ready to be dumped on?
As best we can, I mean, either they get gravel or they get, still stay the same way they are and people keep pitching. Because we can't, we don't have the time to do it both ways. Like, we're in panic mode, because we've been so short-staffed for so long.
Can we pull blades from the other areas, bring them in, shape the roads?
We have been pulling blades in from other areas.
And shape the road before we dump gravel? It's kind of like laying a foundation if you don't have a prep, and you're going to smite it, it's not prep grade.
True, but I mean, I know, but the same spot...
That takes more manpower and more equipment.
I mean, let's face the facts on one thing, there's roads out there that are flat out black, that have no gravel. I don't care how you shape it up or anything, putting gravel on it's going to improve some of those spots. And right now, we have to improve some of them, some of them are horrible waiting. Part of the other problem too is, I know like Francis was really big on making sure we pull the shoulders and shape them, and that's great, but you're also going to basically make people drive through mud, because we're not going to get there and shape it in time, we don't want to put gravel on it. That, there still needs to be some gravel to work with too. I'm to the point now where, I'm not talking about wasting gravel, but you can spread some gravel in some of these areas, even if they're not perfectly shaped, just to make the surface drivable, some of these are bad, and, I mean, these guys can't... I know, but they can't work with anything, like, you can't expect them to blade mud and be like, well, in a couple of weeks, if we can pull the shoulders, we'll get a gravel. I think you got to get some of them gravelled now. Hopefully, next year, you can pull the shoulders and do some of the gravel. Hopefully, next year you can pull the shoulders and do some of the graveling ourselves in these spots, you know, but you gotta try and heal some of these.
You'll at least give us some breathing room.
Right, I mean, that's where, I, I, I don't disagree with the fact that, you know, just splash gravel on, everything's the best, but there are some spots that just flat out need gravel, I don't care what they look like, they're, they're bad, they've been blown off from the snow removal, or they didn't get probably enough coating when we did some fixes over the last couple of years with the grade raises and the culverts that got blown out. And that was because, oh, we don't have time to gravel, we're too busy fixing culverts, well, if you fixed a culvert, you didn't put enough gravel on it, it kind of was a bad deal anyway, and it's pretty obvious and something.
I'm sure you guys got all those places marked, as soon as it rains, say, people are screaming where they're.
Yeah, they marked on maps?
Not on maps, they have them marked on it in their book, so. The operators have it in their, their books.
What about some of these areas where nobody's been on them this spring? There's guys with some of these.
Well, we're not worried, like, with a week's worth of gravel, we're gonna be in one area for now, if that's.
Yeah, if you're only gonna have.
We're gonna do it in the Westfield haul area down there, like, that, that blade operator route, because that's where we're getting the most, most complaints from, like, we don't have the time to do the whole county, like, the whole county's not gonna get gravel. Like, we just don't have the budget for that at all, like, even close. Like, even with our reserve funds, we drain this county. So, I mean, it's a process, like, we're, we're already July too, so, you don't want to be putting it on in October and then scraping it off in November, so.
I guess one suggestion with the gravel is I think you should take one day and do some open shans all route, the west. The reason why I say that is there's a couple of roads right along Eighteen O Four that, you know, you could come right up off the Cattail pit and heal some roads up, just some, they're only short, like, two mile stretches, three, you know, some of them, but I think you should maybe try and leave a day. If you're gonna haul out of Cattail, are you?
Yeah, that's, we will, like, we get a lot done, and there's still some time left, like, we have alternative roads that we can go to.
Okay, well, I just know, because I mean, if you're gonna have a crew running out of Cattail, there's enough, there's a couple of just, I mean, it's short roads, it wouldn't take, like, four days, it'd probably take one good day, and you'd probably heal up three or four different areas.
Can you pull some of these guys out of the office and put them in blades to help out? And if that's an illegitimate question, I'm still gonna ask you that.
No, we can't, because when we do that, then it just falls behind on the office work, and then that guy just gets further behind and stuff like that, so this winter was a perfect example of that, we pulled them out of the office and it was nothing but a shit show for the next three weeks after that.
Lost the lane with your guys.
No, like, we just need to be, we need to be fully staffed, that's what our problem is. We've got some temporary help coming in to help us, but they're not a permanent fix.
So you got twelve trucks for a week? Anytime later now into summer, do it again?
They possibly could come back, or they could possibly leave a little bit of, a few trucks back the following week, but we have to be careful with what we spend on. Just because we have other projects, I know we have reserve funds and stuff like that, but then we get into the, if we get it too high, then we should have bid it out, because that's breaking state law.
Right, well, I mean.
Then that's the state law.
Yeah, that's.
What's the rate at, Earl?
Hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
With a man?
With a man.
And he wants to come over, because he wants to be part of the dispatches, it's going so it isn't a, a beehive and nothing happening.
That's just a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the truck driver.
Do what?
That's just a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the truck, belly dump, and the truck driver.
Right. We furnish the fuel?
No, they furnish, they're only fuel, so. At the end of the, at the end of the, whatever their bill total is, we write them a check for that, just like our contract, because we brought it in this.
Hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, a dollar, I guess.
That's cheap. That's reasonable.
And that's the boat to average, like, I.
Right, no, I say, I, I called, I for everything, two years ago, they were at a hundred and twenty, so I mean, if you're, I mean, they're right there, and I know.
And we, we contacted like seven contractors, and none of them were either busy, or they had trucks sitting, because they couldn't put anybody in them.
Well, I had the same deal too, like I said, I got ahold of the Fettig Brothers out of Napoleon, and they said the same thing, they're, they're, they're too busy for what they have, and if they had two more truck drivers, they'd even think about it, but they couldn't even think about it without two more drivers, so.
So do we have two payloaders that could help load it?
Correct, because we're gonna haul out of the Vanderborst pit and the note pit, because you can't haul out of just one. So we're gonna split them and attack from both sides, so. And then if we finish out, out of the note pit, like, once they work their way further west, and it gets, their mileage gets too far, then we'll bring them both out of the Vanderborst pit, we'll just move that loader over there, so we're not storming one, one motor operated, trying to load twelve trucks at a time.
That's gonna be crazy.
Because we want them to go, we want those trucks to be moving, as soon as they're sitting, I called, I called this morning.
Shabinski said I do not want to be in the pit with this four or five trucks like that. I'm not a constant.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to them.
And wait, I've talked to him yesterday again.
We've been in contact.
Are you guys gonna have a water truck planned with that too?
Their ground was pretty wet, so, other than for the dust control.
I meant the, like, the road, like, I mean, if you're gonna go in and out of the Cattail Road, I mean, that thing's gonna.
We'll see what if we can spare a guy, like, we're.
Well, I, I mean, I would just kind of recommend probably, you know, and. But I mean, even, even with that, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea if they're hauling hard out of there with trucks, maybe even just have one of our guys blading that road up and keep it, because it's, it's gonna get pounded out.
Yeah, we've got.
Right.
Guys designated to blade it.
Okay.
There's also guys that are taking vacation, they want to take some vacation, because they gotta cut hay and stuff like that, there's guys who have doctor's appointments that are scheduled, so.
But yeah, I mean, I think even if you gotta pull someone, I mean, if they're normally blading their route or something that day or whatever, just, yeah. Because that road's gonna get beat up hard, I mean, I'm sure you know that, but I'm just gonna repeat, so.
So into the gravel operation, it'll take four people alone.
Yep.
Two to spread the gravel, because you're doing two different spots.
Yep.
And two guys to load trucks, so that's four people right out of our, our max of, uh, when we have seven.
Yep.
Oh, I got that, uh, I do know another blade operator that would help out if you want. He used to work for your company.
He said he wanted him.
Yeah, I just talked to him.
Oh, did you? Oh, okay, okay, I didn't know he had talked, because he said he, you know, if you need him, he would help out for a few weeks or so.
Yeah, we got, there's a couple other people that have called and said, I could fill in a little bit here and there maybe, but that's, I mean, we're very thankful for that, but that's not a permanent solution.
Right, but at least for the time being, if you can get some guys in there.
Yeah, and we've already got.
Yep.
Four guys that are filling in.
John T came on board, right?
Yep, he was a former employee.
Oh, John T came back?
I talked to him one day and I said.
He started to blade on one day, so.
We got Holm and his son, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's some, there's some days where they gotta take off to do their own thing, so.
So what, are they mostly driving a truck?
Yep, we're graveling.
When is Shabinski gonna come in, seventeen?
Yes, Monday. Where I'm actually meeting with, he's coming down tomorrow, we're gonna meet and drive the rope and stuff like that, and then get him on map with their truck route and the people who know it, and we can relate that to his truck drivers. He's bringing two-way radios down for us, so we can communicate with his truck drivers. So that's on the, that's on the ground one, but I guess.
Are you familiar with these utility permits?
Yep, looked at both there, okay.
Okay. I got cattle guard maintenance on here, so that's them ones for Mosses, we talked about them last year. So I contacted Luke Mosses, Mosses Welding there, he lives just a few miles out of there, but, um, he said that he would, what I was thinking is if we still have that mini excavator on rent, if we could go and pull them cattle guards and clean them out with the excavator, the smaller one. And then if we coordinate with him, he'll come with a trailer, we can load it right on the trailer, and he'll take them back to his shop, and he'll put new pipe on the top, so. The base is with four or six inch railroad rails, he said that's good, so he was just gonna peel off the pipe and put new, uh, two and seven A swell drill rig plate on there, refill the cattle guards, and he said, I remember, he said roughly about fifteen hundred bucks to two thousand bucks to do it, to do it all, but that's estimated, because like I said, you might have to do some reinforcing, but, I mean, a new cattle guard is probably three times that, so.
Yep, no, we don't have that mini excavator, we took it back.
Okay.
I mean, we could.
Are you planning on bringing it back for something else, or?
Depending on how everything goes.
Okay, well, I just ideally, because I mean, they're smaller cattle, it's like, our big excavator ain't gonna work on them, that or, unless you wanna hire somebody local that's got a little excavator to do it, but if you do it, I mean, obviously, we could talk about it some more, but I don't think there's a cheaper option to fix some cattle guards, and I don't think, probably, that's right, if you weren't here last time for that, so. It's the road that goes up on Max Rose, is it's.
Eighth fourth, I believe, isn't it?
Third Avenue and like eighty-fourth or something, so anyway, there's a road that goes through there that the county's got easement, part of the deal with the county having easement is that the landowners didn't want to build fence, so there's, there's three cattle guards, but in two of them are the counties, and one got allowed, one on each end of this big pasture. Even drilled Mosses pasture. Yep, and then, um, and yeah, they're just, I mean, we, they've been cleaned out historically, you know, the last year I went and cleaned them out with my hydro bag, just to get them so the cattle wouldn't get out. But they're getting to be, and I mean, they haven't been, I think it's welded on there, they got built in like the late sixties, but I mean, they're old. But, uh, they're in good shape, other than the tops, the pipe is, is just starting to get bad from driving over them for years, so. So anyway, I got ahold of Luke Mosses, which is Jerome's nephew, but he's got this moss welding business, and he said he would put new pipe on the top of them old beams and then, then he'd bring them back on the trailer, and we could set them back on, or he said he could set them on with a skid loader.
Well, like Tony Bung, does that count, or is that?
No, well, see, that one's different, that one, the county gave them permission, but they maintained that one.
Okay.
But this one was kind of a part of the deal, you know, the, I mean.
A gentleman's agreement here?
Yeah, it's kind of one of those deals that we're trying not to do anymore, but exactly right, so we're kind of on the hope for maintaining it, so.
Terry Mann from Campbell County Road Superintendent, he got ahold of you with that culvert down the state line.
We've talked about it, and we're just waiting back for a price from him, so.
He called me yesterday morning, and he called me again this morning about it.
Yeah, I thought he was supposed to get a quote.
He was gonna draw up a, an agreement with their state's attorney, on a fifty-fifty share, said do it, as far as I'm concerned, so it's clear.
Yeah, then, he said they were going with it, and we talked about, cost sharing with them, and that's as far as, never heard back from them.
I'm waiting for a, a response back from Glenn Gethry, I talked to Joel Colder with the Water Board this morning, but Glenn hasn't called back.
About that culvert?
Yeah. Decisive. Because they don't feel six foot's gonna be adequate.
Well, I think when that came.
Have you been down there, looked at it?
Then, yeah, we were down there last year, and it is a big culvert.
It's a big opening.
We sliced it open just because it was collapsed. The end was collapsed, because then it flooded the first down, downstream, so we just cut it open, and we knew this bad, but it's on a abandoned, like, section line, so. Didn't make our, we closed the road, but we didn't make our top priority to replace it, so. And then if Campbell County wants to take the lead on it, by all means, let them, and we will work, but if it's gonna be sized, it's probably an engineering thing to go through.
Right.
Or engineers do it.
Yeah, I'm sure the Water Board's probably just consulting more and.
Sure, they have a resource.
Well, Moore is the one that they deal with, usually, so, so if they're gonna do it through the Water Board, I guess, but. But yeah, because I know Terry Mann, he called me too, and I just told him, I said, well, said, once you get an estimate, you know, submit it to us, and we'll figure out what we want to do for a cost share or something, that's the last I heard of it, so.
Did you ever talk to Brandon saying? Ever get a chance to visit with him yet?
Brandon's.
So that would have been on the drain tile on Noel Wayne or whatever.
Oh, no, we were just talking. The previous guy that was in here, we were just talking about that.
Because they're willing to hike the, you know, across there or something, yeah.
They don't have attention to the other, the kids. Gravel off the road off the bridge there. And they use it to fill my Eugene Bradner's place, a hole on the bridge evidently.
That.
Do you know anything about it?
What, what road is it on?
On Eugene, by Eugene Bradner's old farm.
Oh, you know Eugene Bradner.
Yeah.
You don't know where it's, you know where Albert Oil lives, the dairy farm.
West, West Indian County shop. Yep.
Yep, that's on that road evidently. By Eugene Bradner's, right where you go across the creek.
No, I, I don't, nobody said it.
They pulled some gravel and some clay off the shore, but fill it in, and just wanted to bring it into my attention, and I did steal the gravel and the clay. So he said, let Skyward hold on.
Like, on the bridge or before the bridge?
I don't know, somewhere by the bridge evidently.
So you're talking about the one, you're talking about the one by Clarence Bradner's place?
Oh, by Albert, uh, what's his name, Eugene.
Oh, Eugene Bradner, okay, so you're from the west.
That's the old, was it McCully Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you're talking between Albert and Eugene probably, there, there's that bridge going across the creek.
This road goes east and west.
Yep, so it'd be the southeast corner, southeast corner of Section eleven there, there's that bridge.
Take a look at it. And up here, Skyward, their way at Newsman's Place, just to the west, east of, what the hell's the name of that Romney place?
Maverick.
Maverick, take a look at that road. The way it's all washed out.
Skyward, that bridge is on Eightieth Street southwest.
Then there's another culvert washing out, undercutting on Ninety-third, is that what Eric Holm was on? Ninety-first and Ninety-third?
By who?
Eric Holm. It doesn't go down that far, it's by Elmer Rourke's old farmers, so, water runs through there when it had that big rain. Must be underwashing.
What's Bob Hydrick's average?
Huh?
Bob Hydrick's average.
We got, we got a blade operator working in that area.
They, they did that culvert already, I think.
Did they do that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That culvert got done.
Roger Mattson Culvert is done?
One of South, North.
And it's done, we just have to finish, uh, Seaton's Barrow pit, like, I spread the tachyon on it yesterday, so we just gotta, because he was very, working with Roger was very helpful, he was, we worked on a deal with, for clay and stuff like that, so he was very easygoing, very helpful, it's very helpful when the landowners are work, work well, it's like the couches last year with their big culvert, they were very helpful, so. The, the road is open now, so.
We replaced that twice, right, last fall and this spring?
Yeah, last fall, but.
You didn't have to redo the culvert, you just.
No, we just pretty much put the clay back, that water, because it was, I mean, it washed over the culvert that, there's, the creek makes an L in there, or whatever, waterway makes an L, and it washed over the other road, and it was like probably ten feet from the bottom of the culvert to the top of the road, so there was a big volume of water down there, we even had to put some material on top of the road on the other one, so.
Do you know where Joel Culver lives?
No.
Do you know where it enters? Just to the east and north.
Fifty-sixth Street up there somewhere, yeah.
There's another tough.
I just drive to it, I don't know the address.
I don't pay attention to the address, I just know where the people live.
It's like when someone tells me they live in Cottage Street in Hazelton, I don't remember where that is, might as well be the moon.
Fifty-sixth?
It's east of Joel Culver.
I don't think it's fifty-six, I was just blurting out a street, don't I, it's somewhere.
East of that is a road that goes north of the road, curbs if I recollect, am I right? There's a curb and there's a creek that comes through there. It's an old cement box culvert, or a box bridge. And it's undermined on the west side real bad.
Okay.
East and north of Joel Culver, probably about half mile, maybe a mile. Don't want you to run out of work.
Yeah, I know, I get it.
Yeah, I don't think they would.
No.
But other than that, then we have old engineering doing a bid proposal for taking care of some really bad soft spots, like by, it'd be by up by Braddock, by the St. Michael's Church, that one always gets really bad.
Really bad.
Right, this, really bad, and then, uh, actually, it'd be Seventeenth Avenue up there, where by, uh, Judy.
Carlson's, that, yeah, the Federale Road.
That Federale Road, uh, not, they did some preliminary pricing for cement stabilization, for having a contract to come in and subcut it, geo grid, gravel, and everything like that, and it was about half, half the cost to cement stabilize it, so. That's where they come in and they, so they hook it to a machine, they put what they call a reclaimer, and it grinds in powdered cement, and then it sets up really good, and they've had very good success in other counties doing this, so.
Take a look, right there by the Scrubsburg Farmers Elevator, the CHX building, right, coming out of the town going east.
Yep.
There's two nasty, nasty spots.
So we're gonna see what the prices come in and how these hold up, and then, yeah, like, I think that's, that might be a better thing than doing drain tile.
Yes, okay, that would work out there by saying.
Well, the geo grid, I know we did that for that road going into Drillman Reed and Mosses and that.
Yep.
But, I mean, it's, it's definitely.
There was, there was another.
You can, you can tell that where, where you start and stop, that's.
Yeah.
That Federal Aid Road, like, right by Stevie Heisen, too, there, there was a bad spot there.
I know Francis did geo grid in a few different spots, and it really seems to be holding up.
It's an option, it's just, when it was half the cost to do this.
Right.
Stabilization, it was.
Well, I think the geo grid idea, especially for St. Michael's, it's kind of a short run, kind of the same with even like Randy Weigels up there, too, where they're, it's not a mile and a half long, you know, it's probably six hundred to eight hundred feet or something, you know, that's where they're.
So just the preliminary engineer's estimate, so it'd be Randy Weigels, both on Nineteenth Avenue, and then what is it, Sixty-second? Sixty-fourth up there, takes that L in there, St. Michael's, and then the Federal Aid Road. Come in at like two hundred and, uh, don't quote me on this, because I don't have a quote in front of me, is it two hundred and thirteen thousand or something like that?
For all of them though, combined?
Probably, all four of those, and geo grid was four hundred and fifty-six, almost double.
Yeah.
So, but he's working on it.
Geo grid was twice what the con, so, oh, I thought it was the other way around.
Nope.
So the cement reclaiming's half of what.
Half of what geo grid and gravel was.
Wow.
This is something new.
Uh, it's been around for a few years, and other counties have done it, so. Like, they, he was telling me they had a project where they couldn't even get a truck through there, like, they were pulling it through with a dozer, and they did this. And an hour later, they were running loaded trucks across it. So, kind of, oil fields used it in the past, so. So that's, we're looking at that, so hopefully we're looking at, we can still do some of that work at this point. And then it's, geo grid, you gotta put a foot of gravel over the top of it, this stuff, you can just do your normal four to six inches, so it saves money. That precious commodity of ground.
So did you talk to that guy down in South Dakota about the gravel?
Yes, I did, uh, he, they don't have any that he'll sell, but he's willing to let the county come in and prospect, so.
Where's his head?
He's got it pinned by the state line.
Calvin Stomper, Calvin.
I thought that was totally mine now.
He wasn't a hundred percent sure, though, he thought there would be something left in there, so.
That's good, gravel.
So we're, we're in the process, so we'll get with them when we get some time and put on their prospect.
What about Randy and Tom Hake's pin, right there by Highway eleven and eighty-three going east and to the south side?
That, I think, is RTS.
I think they're mighty, are they gonna set up this week?
Well, I don't know, I guess we'll, we'll talk to them.
Talk to them, yeah.
We'll talk about it.
Because Hake brought my attention, Randy did.
What, did they have some extra there, maybe?
Is it what?
Did they have some extra there, maybe?
No, they want, they think they're gonna mine some, the way it sounded, and throw a stop by them. I don't know, have you heard anything about it, Scott?
Nope, I haven't heard anything.
I do got a bridge, I want you to take a look at it.
Is that one on First Avenue up there?
Main Avenue.
Main Avenue, well, north of sixty-nine?
The one I told.
Yeah, I looked at it, uh, I don't, I don't see much of an issue, there was a little bit that fell through between the, 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 not the pillars, like, the, the decking.
Okay.
Looks like they took, it was a box culvert, and then they put a top on it.
Sure.
So, I didn't see anything, we're gonna do a little further investigating, but I don't.
Yeah, because somebody had told me they thought it was getting in bad shape, and I know I checked it, it's not on the inspection. You know, because I thought right away I would go to the DOT inspection thing, well, it wasn't on there, so. I just drove across it the day they called, too, so I was like, gee, I could have looked at it, but I was already gone by the time they called, but I.
No, I didn't.
It seems like a solid bridge, I mean, so it's.
We're gonna investigate it a little further.
Well, I mean, even if you do have to get, say, if you find anything worth looking at, you wanna bring, you know, Wold or somebody, make sure it gets inspected, because the last thing you want is a bridge to go down, because.
Yeah, it's really just, I mean, not just a, but it's a box.
Right, it's like, like you said, it's just got guardrail on the side, or it's.
Yeah, it's like they.
Sure, they dressed up the box culvert, it's not really a bridge, okay.
What are we doing on Sanger Way, getting it? On that road with those culverts going through?
On.
Eighty-eight on there? On eighty-eight, like, like, three months. Uh, we're in the, as we move to federal funding, remember, we're gonna bid that out to have them extended next year.
Next year?
Well, that's the bid bag, yeah. I think, I believe Wold is working on that, okay?
I didn't know what it was going.
Mike tried to call me during the meeting, so I have to call back, he had a couple of questions on something.
Because they were looking at those, gotta be extending those culverts.
So other than that, I don't have any much else for the road department as of stuff going on.
Did you get your complaint?
No, not.
October?
Well, technically they're built.
Right.
We don't really wanna take ownership on them till October, due to, you know, work left on leave and stuff like that, um, but. We didn't know, they were kind of figuring out how to work with the buyback and stuff like that. People want to take early delivery.
What was that, a state problem?
Orange.
I've looked at a lot of rush.
Yeah, well, that's what you get when you buy used stuff, um, we had, we found a couple of issues with it, so it's back there up at Nelson International getting fixed. They were not very truthful on their description.
I stopped and looked at it one day, it was, I mean, it looks good when you, when you first see it, when you drive it up.
Well, that was one of the better ones out of that collection, but we did end up getting a wing, a plow, the underbody plow, and a sand, and a sander in the back.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So I was gonna say, I mean, you did it for, what, twenty-five thousand?
Well, thirty, thirty-four after the buyer's premium.
Oh, the buyer's premium, and auctions kill you on that, don't they?
Yeah, horrible.
Wow.
One of the better ones you can find for thirty-four.
Well, I was gonna say, it's not like you paid for something, I mean, that's the market for them, that's.
We weren't, we didn't pay the highest amount of that one.
No, right, that's what I mean, I, I've shopped enough on my own, because I always thought about getting one just for my own business, and I thought getting a state truck would be all right. They're not very, well, they're not very easy to retain either, because everybody's after them, that's, that's, so, I don't know.
Hmm, that's all we need to know.
That's all, yeah.
Well, that's why there's a lot of, in another five, or whatever their rotation is, it'll be a little bit better, because they're doing stainless steel boxes, that'll, that'll affect it. I mean, still, all your undercarriage is still metal, probably, that gets rusted out, and that's one of the problems, we have a rear end seal that went out. And that was out.
Got a rush, Louder bought an end dump with an aluminum box on it, down in Florida or some damn place, that's like new. What, didn't pay thirty-four thousand before? I don't know. Probably paid a little bit more.
Yeah, you gotta get it delivered, that's the problem, I've looked at that stuff, too, and then you're like, ah, you're gonna go get it, right? Okay. All right, well, I guess the discussion, because I guess the rest is departmental budgets, yeah, so, we're gonna do the salary, guys. I was gonna tell you, I don't think Gary was really that far, I, I really didn't disagree with, with Gary's assessment at all, there, uh, I, it's not really the chairman's position to make seconds and stuff, but I, I would probably went along with that, I didn't think that was really far off at all. So, I mean, if nobody's gonna bring any ideas to the table, I don't know, at least Gary brought it forward, and I don't think it was a bad one at all, so.
Well, like I said, the only thing I thought right away afterwards was like, you know, are we gonna pick every employee that he gives us pay scale to, you know? I don't know if it's our position to do that, but.
Well, I think, I, I, like you said, I think I come to the position where I think, I think Skyler did a good job, I think he's assessed his position great, I think the one mistake, I, I totally agree with Gary, is that I think the department head should definitely be the highest paid, and I think he went pretty close right behind him with the foreman's positions, which I think was the proper way, I mean.
So, so actually, uh, the other one's getting more than the other road firm, too?
Actually, the way, according to this one here, uh, Skyler had both foremans actually making more money than himself.
Yeah, there were two of them making more.
Which is, which is admirable, I see what you're trying to do, I get that you value your guys, that's awesome.
Well, I do, but it's for the years of service that go on, like, the top one has been here twenty-two years.
I understand what you're doing, but I still look at, you bring a new guy in that's in charge, he, he should be more.
Well, I'd like to change, whether you guys wanna do that.
Well, I did, I did like to see, you know, I did like to see the foreman, two or three thousand lower than a guy.
I think, I think, I, I think, like I said, it's admirable what you did, you respect your guys, and you value them, and we do, too, and I think, I think Gary's suggestion doesn't really discredit anything, they do, it just kind of emplace the value where it should be, which is the department head should be the highest paid, and it's not a huge bump, it's not like you're way above these guys, I think it's, I think it signifies that, that you're the department head, and that's where it should be, but it's not like you're twice what they're making, or even, you know, I think it's just a reasonable increase, I.
So Gar, Gar and John, were they about to say here, sir?
No.
Who's, who's, who's their partner?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Smith's been there for, yeah, two, twenty-three years.
See, that's why.
They should, they should get.
Right, and I think Gary kind of reflected that.
That's what I reflected, too, because he dared long, and he didn't.
Really think there was a reasonable motion, I think, at the same time, we're, we're in the argument, also gonna have motion, though. Well, it dies, you gotta revive it. But, yeah, I'm just saying, you have to remind it, it's dead.
I read, read around seventy-five, and Gar seventy-two, right around there, and John seventy-five, and it's, so.
Okay, so, I said, what do you say, against the whole?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Gary's basically repeating his original motion, which is Skyler at seventy-five thousand, Gar at seventy-two thousand, and John at seventy thousand, for your base salary. Is there second to that motion, second by commissioner, is there any more discussion on salaries? All the other salaries were basically as Skyler approved it. Not hearing any more discussion, all those payers say aye? Aye, opposed? Terry opposed? Motion carries? That's all we got.
Great, you, is there anything other, on the budget that you guys wanna talk to, other than?
I don't think so, because like you said, we, we, the gravel numbers may be.
The oil does amend that and get that to you, one of the things, correct? That, well, they want us to add putting gravel.
Yeah, I won't do that, unless you want to.
If you, if you, if you can do it, I mean, you can just do it, we're, just, two-twenty on the gravel, or the county road and bridge, and then.
I would, I would, I would guess I would do that, and keep.
And then the district, we're gonna go on three hundred.
And keep it, I mean, next year we'll have to line up something for gravel earlier.
Well, I think, okay, that is one good thing, you brought up before, that you were kind of working on a long-term gravel plan, as far as, so we could make this for people, maybe do some bids for next year.
Yeah, actually, we're in the process of purchasing the GPS, we can actually go on GPS for locations. Highlight it on a map, and when they get done, we can mark off, stay with our culverts, we wanna do it, so we're moving forward.
Well, because I think that would be the pro, the proper rule would be to kind of establish a plan every winter that are, you know, even every fall, so you could package some for the winters, without, I mean, you're getting competitive bids by guys that are still looking for work that time. We'll come spring, summer, it makes some more sense, you're doing a plan together, and like you said, you're gonna, you know.
Well, we have state attorney looking into it, I believe there's no really definition of what private, private drive is, if I. No is still the road department's answer for us, I don't wanna do it, we don't have the time, the manpower to.
Right, unless, what if, what if they would pay us, would you?
I still, you still, okay, that's sort of a, yeah. Someone in the county should just buy it, we.
Well, I think that's, that's the one thing, yeah, it would be really nice to be, like you said, get that, that's the perfect segue for someone that doesn't drive, or is down to that, that's right. Well, it's hard to do in concrete, and I'll say that because you have situations like we're talking about before, where people's driving, drive is actually a section line, it's actually a road that gets fixed, it's just that once you get to the yard, it quits getting fixed. And neighboring farmers use it, too, and so that half mile, quarter mile, one mile, still got part of a blade route, well, and it, you know, it. Most route are riding different reasons, so it's, it's hard, that's why, like you said, this concrete answer, and even private roads, that's the reason why it's always been trouble, too, besides.
We're looking into anything that we don't maintain in the summertime, it'll follow me.
That's, it's, it's hard to come up with a line, because like you said, there's a lot of gray area with some of these roads, that's the only thing that's wrong, so. Right now, trying to stick to your main secondary roads and federal aid roads, and then as things come in, lots of people are sitting.
Caution the people of those pathways and plan accordingly, so, don't rely on the county, this becomes crazy. Yeah, if you haven't, you haven't, don't have a snow blower, that might be a good time to buy it. That'll be two months, when it snows again, they're not.
You've got time, though.
Yeah.
You have to share.
How we fold up?
July's a good time to buy a snow blower, actually. Better than January, you're in a blizzard, so.
Okay, everything, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. I think the only thing left is departmental budgets, right, Marcy?
No, you wanna do those two permits, right, I mean, I forget about you.
The utility permits?
Oh, yeah, yeah, in, oh, yeah.
All right, so we have a, we have a utility permit for Camp Electric, uh, to install and maintain facilities from intersection eleven, Avenue, Southeast, P K Fifth Street, Southeast, which, uh.
I'll make a motion, too, can we do both at the same time? I'm making a motion to approve both, um, South Central Water and Camp.
We have a motion in the second to approve the permits for Camp Electric and South Central Regional Water. Doesn't say here if camp is boring, or if they're trenching. Why not the one boring is, uh, South Central.
Permit to maintain facilities.
Yeah, it says jacket and cable, but I. You can assume, right, it doesn't require.
It, it looks like, you know, eleven, that would be a good solar act here.
Sure. We have a motion in a second to approve the utility permits, um, I will be abstaining to with, so. I'm doing the boring for South Central on that, so. So we have a motion in the second, all those in favor of the permits signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permits approved. Now it's just departmental budgets, right?
Definitely.
Okay, so the only ones left here to leave is Marcy's, to have a registered partners, and then she, you go to, some of your general ones.
Oh, they're the BA there.
Well, the BA friends are coming in for that, she said, so.
Okay, so like, what I did with the auditors, I just put Pam, uh, on her, she recommended, but I don't know what you guys are gonna do with the salaries. The only other one I went up on is the publishing, as you can see, I went over quite a bit in twenty twenty-two. There's a lot of publishing that runs through my office, a lot of tax implementation meetings, um, help wanted, and everything else, I, I usually just run that through my budget, and put it over publishing, and you can see I, I went over on that, so I increased that a thousand dollars, and then another one is the telephone. I had to go up a little bit because I went over on that. And that's about it for the auditors, and then for the treasures, I think the only one I might have increased was a little bit of postage, I believe, no, I left everything. So I didn't go up anything more on that, and like I said, I based it off of, um, Pam's recommendation, um, Steph, I don't know what you guys are gonna do with that, but that's what I used when I put that in there. And then the next one is motor vehicle, um, I left that all the same, basically, just, uh, postage supplies and any technology if you have to change a printer out or anything like that. Um, motor vehicles bringing in about twenty thousand dollars with the revenue right now on fees and titles. Risk manager, um, I get paid to do the risk manager for the county, um, do all the drug tests, and do all the LMS. We do get this money back from the association of counties with all of our LMS and all of the, um, inspection reports and everything, I just, we get this all back. So they, we, it's just for all that. The next was county commissioners, you guys are gonna have to decide, if you wanna change your budget at all. Or who you guys are gonna do this, huh?
You can't be slower than paying.
Pardon me?
What?
Oh.
We tried to do that before, didn't we?
Yeah, I know, you can't, I, well, what you have to do is you have to, when you lower them in their election year, or that's, I said, you can't do them all at once. I tried that already. I don't know, I'd say just keep everything the same.
Keep everything the same.
And we need to give the chairman a raise for all this hard work and effort. I mean, now the motion's back.
What did before, is that to the chairman, or what, that higher?
No, it's because I had to pay two county commissioners a monthly salary.
Oh, okay, I was wondering if that was.
Do you want me to just leave everything the same on there?
I think so, once anybody sees anything different.
Okay, and then the next one, superintendent schools, I think that's about five hundred dollars. Um, Dick Grant told me that he doesn't see barter costing anywhere near this, but he wanted to keep them in there, just in case something comes up. And Josh is the next one, he, he worked the guy with the, so, it's, it's happening.
Are Dale, doesn't have a Dale for the annual full-time?
No.
Oh, okay, that's why.
Anywhere between sixty to seventy-five percent.
Karen, do you want me to go through the rest of them, I mean, do you guys just want to create, do you have any questions?
Clearly, we're all completed jobs, so Karen, here's, like, yeah, go ahead.
I'm supposed to go through everyone? Or what do you want me to do?
Yeah, like the VA officer or.
Okay, well, the next one is hospital fifteen oh five, that's what we got to do this, so I could use it to purchase gravel, but. And I thought it was just use it on gravel two zero without, but it's point four.
Where is that, where do you want?
Don't, did I, did you guys have help?
Next one was VA officer.
I'm stuck with the.
Which girl was that? Well, that was the.
The issue.
Didn't give you copy that, I'm sorry, I left it in there for a line purpose. VA officer, he went up, I, I'm a little confused of why he didn't put anything in for travel. I don't know if it was just, he didn't see that, because he is at a conference this week, you know, I'm sure he's gonna want to go up here, but. He didn't budget anything for it, he put in two thousand dollars because he wants it in the desk. And Craig is working with Rock Pride Industries right now, he's come up with a price.
So do you want to put something in there for travel?
Well, I don't know, I, I'm gonna have to talk to him.
Well, it doesn't look like Jeff had anything in there for travel either.
He did, because he did everything online, but I know Brad's not gonna want to do it.
Right.
He's in Fargo this week.
So maybe before.
I'll talk to him. I'll make a question or a talk to him about that. Then the next one is courthouse building in grounds, we usually budget fifty thousand for the courthouse, for upkeep, supply, I mean, so when, in case something ever, it's with the rope or. Anybody, you'll see in twenty twenty-two, we only spent sixteen thousand four hundred dollars. Like I said, we usually budget the fifty just in case something would go wrong. On the next one is utilities, that's utilities, water, the heat water for the. Courts. Okay, and the next one's elections, I don't know, we never know what to do with this here, there's gonna be a lot of training, we'll work through the whole system again. So there's gonna be a lot of training of the business for that, and usually we've spent close to thirty thousand dollars. Programming of machines, the backups, the coworkers, which costs one fifty thousand. NEACO, those are the fees that the dues that we pay to North Dakota Association of Counties, they've been up a bit in twenty-four. We stuck that in there.
There's something, you could see seven thousand dollars.
Miscellaneous, you'll see, I really went up on the examination fees because we have our new auditors now that they're gonna be charged. Um, let's see if I went up anywhere else, that's really about it, if it's in place, you might increase that on. I have no control over that, our previous auditors decided not to audit counties and so.
And they were really easy.
They were the only reason.
Previous ones. Eric, the council.
Unemployment, I usually budget three thousand in the general fund for that, because anybody's gonna be. And then the community restitution program, that's a program that we use to rehabilitate, we service and stuff like that, I hear you. That's it.
Yes and no. The program that we also use for unsupervised supervision of offenders. Yeah, community service is one part of that, we rarely use the community service, because it's tough to get anybody to do that, but. Where we have offenders that we arrest for non-felony offenses, it might be drug offenses, might be theft offenses, but they, they're misdemeanor offenses. They don't qualify for supervised probation under Department of Corrections. Like for somebody convicted of a felony or somebody that's paroled to prison. We use that program for supervision fees. We have a contract with Senator Incorporated, so we have these, what I refer to as problem children, that we have repeat problems with that are still doing burglaries, maybe reduced to a misdemeanor. Maybe misdemeanor level drug charges that need supervision, they're subject to drug testing, search clauses and things like that, that's where we use that program. And they have to pay a supervision fee to be in that program, court ordered. And that's through Senator, Jim Becker, who I've known my entire career, is the probation officer that was in that. Other than that, if you're charged and convicted of a felony, that level then goes to Department of Corrections, the OCR, for supervised supervision. They do not supervise those.
Okay, and then the next one is advertising, we pay, they call it advertising, whatever, it's to the Lewis and Park Regional Development, to be members of them, to that. Community. Taken out through the, yeah, to be a member of the Lewis and Park Regional Development, I guess. The next one is abandoned cemeteries, the central says the counties are responsible for taking care of the abandoned cemeteries. So I usually budget about thirty-five hundred dollars, you can see we haven't really spent any money.
Talking about mowing and everything.
Yeah, mowing and fencing or anything that needs to be done to abandoned cemeteries, we are responsible for those. Insurance reserve, I went up five percent because that's what North Dakota Insurance we serve, and state fire tornado. I asked what they're anticipating for twenty twenty-four and they said they're, they're anticipating a five percent increase, they are. Increase in our liability limits also in addition to that. Food can, we pay our food can tree six thousand dollars a year. Michelle didn't tell me to give increase on there, so I just saw that the same. County park, at the May County Park Board meeting, you guys said to. Do fifty thousand for a water line and fifteen thousand for chip seal, so that I did increase that, I kept the same for the distribution. I don't know, you guys did just give eighteen thousand this last year, so I don't know, I just kept it at fifteen again, I don't know if you want me to increase that or not.
Is Seaman Park, County Park?
No, that's Langworth's.
Okay.
This is Langworth's.
Okay.
But you know, if you remember at the May County Park Board meeting where you guys gave the cities all like. It's yours. Thirty-five hundred, whatever, so I figured fifteen thousand that you're giving for next year when we have our park board meeting, you want to increase that, I have to do that now.
I don't know, because that's what we, that's what we did.
That should be enough, I would think.
I don't know, we, we did a little more, right, because we pulled out of the.
Yeah, we took some.
Waterline deal.
Right.
Yeah, I think, well, whatever we did this year.
Just leave this the same.
Yeah, just leave it the same.
You don't want me to increase it to eighteen, then leave it at fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. And the next one is a technology budget that I have to run our government soft, armor interactive. Just some miscellaneous stuff. The telephone for the, the elevator, the telephone, we have a tower that we have some radios on, we rent, that we have to rent from.
Band guard's a big one.
I, I increased band guard because Josh thought maybe we would need to. Have band guard, it was a mixed to work for us, these were so far behind, I don't like the setting, so I did go up a little bit, we may not need that though. And the next one is human resources, we don't have a HR consultant right now, that you guys want me to put in, I, I just threw a number out there of ten thousand, you want me to. Are we gonna have an HR person in twenty-four, not, what do you want me to do?
I think it'd be a good idea to put some in there, in case we get one.
Leave it in, I'll.
You should have one.
And then the next one is Michelle, she's not here, when she did, I made a copy, send it to me. Last year, I know we budgeted a lot more indirect costs, positive, we're not being a person that's for, we want to budget in our general fund. I think the state's gonna take over all those indirect costs, but she told me we better figure some costs, so I'm gonna put thirty-three hundred dollars in the general ledger, just in case there's some indirect costs that are not gonna be reimbursed for. And that's a number that she had set up what she'd do, and then the next one is tax director. I did this budget because we don't have tax director, I went, all the salaries empty, and then I didn't increase anything else. I, I think the travel will be enough, we get somebody for training, because I do a lot of them online now, it used to be where they had to go up to Vis Mart to attend all. The trainees to get their certifications, but now you can do a lot of them online, so I left that the same, I don't think we'll need that. DEM, that's Mary Sanger, the contract we have with Hurley County. And then lastly, I, I just made you guys copies of like we board the water hole. Soil conservation, I haven't received the budget yet from the hospital, senior citizens, historical society and ambulance, I'm with you. They are pretty much going to need. But they're supposed to have it in the, hopefully, by August, I just, it's like, we did so. And that would be it.
Are we required to, these classes that you did?
No.
No?
No, the Association of Counties tells you that you have to take this, but I'm pretty sure the elected, the people elected you to come, you'll care if you're honest. I don't think, I don't think I've been any then unless I went because I wanted to, no, there's the requirement that the Association of Counties decides if you're qualified to be a commissioner. I mean, if you want to attend, go to, yeah, you can board anyway, you don't have much smarter than you. You have not met the requirements to become a county commissioner yet.
So now what you guys gotta decide is what you want me to put in for salaries, I know you discussed, what the department shares. Everybody has to put in different, Kathleen, you put in Sam and some of that. What you guys' intentions were.
Oh, look, tax director there.
Well, tax director, I mean, since earlier we're gonna put it.
Yeah.
Which is pretty much, I think that was in the ballpark for what we had shown earlier on this, so, I don't know, I mean, this one that the department heads came up with, we ended up using that for almost everything we provided. Because Skylar, Skylar's equipment operator's budget came off it, that's what Gary was using for his, his deputies. I mean, that's what. It seems like we were using the department head one, I mean, we used fans, obviously it didn't either.
Tyler was using the other one.
Yeah, but that's the one that we ended up kind of finalizing off, was going for that, or that's the one that Skylar submitted and so did.
Right.
So did Gary. Right, so I mean, that's where, I mean, that's where it ended up landing anyways, but I'd say you'd almost have to go with that. Scale back, then you scale back from there.
The three oh eight one.
Right, because that's the one that the, that's the one we ended up pretty much, I mean, Skylar submitted that for his department and so did Gary, well, that's where.
And they're not far off from most of the others.
No, they're, it's not, it's, it's, there's a couple of them that are even a little bit lower, I mean, it's really, it's give and take on it for the most part, it's just that, you know, some departments can have significant increase, which is what we're, they're talking about for a while, so. These are, they're, it's not like one is twice as much as the other, and so. And then, um. I guess with Josh is.
He's the only one that wanted less.
Josh is. I think basically his request here is he wants to be full-time, which I think for a long time, we've almost been asking him to do that, so. I don't see any issues.
Well, basically, he worked four days a week.
Yeah, right, I mean, it's, originally, he didn't want to be full-time because he had other things he was doing and all those other things, he's not doing anymore, so.
Chad, you would tax position.
No, you guys told me to re-advertise this, you know, that's how.
That's it, okay.
Do you want to, do you want to go through some of the, maybe?
No.
No, you sure?
No, Lex Sanders is behind me.
I guess, I guess my deal with Josh is there's a need for it, I guess, I, I'm not opposed to put him on for the time.
No, I think he, he, I think we should.
Right.
One thing I can say, and I know Marcy will agree with this, on the one thing about Josh is everything he seems to have taken on, he's improved. He's one of the guys where if he decides he's gonna do something, all of a sudden, that's what we're doing from now on, I mean, look at the building permits. You know, we used to rely on each other to go out, look at a building permit, one guy had a different, Josh has streamlined all that, he looks at everything, he makes maps for us, he does the measurements.
That actually does.
You know, the, the mapping side of it, I know the road department's looking at utilizing him for some of their stuff for monitoring, like we talked about, if we're grappling in an area, he's gonna put maps together. You start putting him on things, everything he takes on, I mean, the YouTube channel and the putting of meetings on the internet, and we had the idea, he, he did that. And that, his idea to do YouTube and save us a pile of money versus trying to live stream it and all the other ideas we thought of, I mean, Josh is. Josh was, everything he's touched has, has been improved, so I think he, I think he's very valuable and I think bringing him on full-time.
So that we got.
I think right there, I mean, the request was to put him at a grade eighty, step five, that's what it's on with this sheet, what the department heads went on, I'd say go with that for now. I mean, Pam was, actually, he's requesting for less than what Pam even initially put him on there, so. Well, I don't think, I think the plan, I think with this whole deal with this budget, we basically bring him on full-time at the beginning of the year, I guess, because he's not gonna take insurance, according to his letter here, he's got insurance also house-wise, so. Basically, just a pay increase and the expectation's gonna work five days a week, so. I don't know if we really need a motion for that.
I would, yeah.
So, but yeah, no, I think, I think bring him on full-time would be optimal, so. That's the case, I think preliminary budgets are officially. They have the, what the bills, Skylar, you got something?
Yeah, I just need some clarification on one thing, they got wage increase for the road department, does that affect August first? Also, the one we can advertise? Like, to Lex Sanders?
I guess to be fair, we have.
Yeah, well, I'd say that was probably, I mean, was that the intent of the motion?
Yeah, I get that, I didn't think about that.
Yeah. But I mean, that was the reason why we did that, it's the reason why we voted on it, that we was bringing it forward.
If you wanna, you wanna try to advertise at a higher.
You approve the vote.
I mean, we wouldn't have voted on it if we weren't.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
I was like a little way.
And yeah, there was no reason to vote on it, and we were gonna do it either, so yeah, I would say. Is that officially clarified then? It's starting on this first, or do you want another motion?
You guys, seeing as the sheriff department, how long you did, yeah, it's first to be done.
Okay, well, I would say if anything, can we just. I don't know, properly amend the motion, that's what you've been doing. Well, I'd say it's on the record, we all agree that, I mean, we voted on it and we're gonna do it August first, anybody having disagreement with that. I mean, obviously, I know you really voted for it, but the three of us that voted for it, I have no problem starting August first.
No, because I just assumed you had it out advertising that bill. Maybe we get somebody in here.
Any objection? Well, I'd say it's, heard that word, the intent was to do it August first, so.
Good, with the clarification in, I think.
Bills. Well, somebody else has something else?
I never revise. By full budget, I revise it to include the updated salaries and insurance.
Okay. Well, I don't think we're needing to review it, because I, I mean, we've kind of been going through it with everybody else, I don't.
Just give it tomorrow.
I'd say just give it tomorrow, so she can compile it with the rest of the preliminary budget, I think we're all assuming it was probably gonna be whatever that sheet or whatever we decided on.
Well, I actually, I've got it, but, obviously, only, um, Jeff is the greatest, Jeff, like, having one of them.
Okay, well, if you wanna.
It wasn't that same, he gave it in all those tweets up, he knocked out, sent it out to Alex.
Okay. Probably, I guess, we just wanna give it tomorrow, so make sure that your number is the same as that, is that department head sheets, the one with. We have a business to board, board other than bills.
I get it, I, I do want to, I think I forgot to mention this morning, in regards to putting my name on the checking account, I understand I need to tap the other minutes.
I get it, John.
I get it, John, it's happening.
Well, I mean, I don't, I think it would be real impossible, it would be approved.
Then we'll have to wait till next one.
The approved minutes is how they go on, we made the approval today? Really?
And so they don't have to talk to Kelly or get again, I mean.
The bank don't have YouTube? Okay, well, I guess if they need approved minutes, then yeah, I guess we owe approved minutes.
That's what I had the last time.
Yeah, and we'll have a meeting before the, yeah, that'll be the next meeting, would be the first one in August, so.
We can buy a few where we take?
Yeah.
Don't spend any money for it.
There you go, already shut down. Did it finally start raining?
We just missed you when I walked in.
Really?
This morning or the Saturday?
We expected rain all day. Well, I don't, did it come in that packet?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It was a letter, it did.
Okay, well, then that's it, because I reviewed all that stuff and then, like I said, I have it in my packet with a note saying, don't forget, and then I didn't work. I did forget it.
I think I might have emailed me that, I don't know if I made it easy to fill.
I'm just going to keep this one since I wrote it on.
I'm sure I got it.
What do you want to add?
What's this really?
Oh, that's, well, that's the.
Forty-six, twenty-two, that's slower, isn't it?
Yeah, we just still have to review the vouchers and all that, but that comes out of the human service budget.
We're the host county, we pay out.
Yeah, we still review every, all, everything comes through Emmitts County.
And then you can be at all of it.
Yep, that comes out of the project.
So why is that in such this county? Because you chose so?
We chose.
Well, when the sixth county, when they went regionalized, it was Hitter, Emmitts, Logan, Dickey, Long Island. Who that was negative. All of those are we have. They did, they have, I didn't get my. What's your number to your basis?
Well, the trouble is, is it's not something very easily rotatable and that's the problem. Once you start the process and you get the host county, I mean, everything comes to you. Part of the reason we became the host county as well is because our social service director, his own director. So it became just a lot more streamlined, just have everything run through the courthouse. I need those glasses though, I shouldn't just. You know, we're not supposed to be back there.
Or what are we going to do, tie on that airport?
Well, I think we have to make a decision today, we still got to our next meeting, we want to make a decision. Think about it, ask some people. On some papers. Ah, I was asking Craig if you want to take some of my papers here. Papers here, it's like you got to figure out which ones came together the cycles. I need my bed down, you have a white one. There you go.
So Mr. Chairman, and you guys can discuss the airport today, you can wait till August. I mean, oh, you were just.
Well, yeah, these guys are here taking straw poll. I don't know, you know, I can tell you that I believe it was, was it a year ago when they came in?
That's when there was a controversy in the paper, wasn't it?
Well, I just know that the conversation before, I think, I mean, we were all here. I think Dad, Dad wasn't out, but the rest of us and and the conversation, the conversation kind of led that you know, they wanted the county to create mills and I felt the same way before. There's several other mills in the county. You know, the hospital and the ambulance are the two that come to mind right away. And even the federal aid one gets voted on. A lot of an additional type mills for projects that are outside of the typical taxing generally went to a vote of the people. And I just, I'll just say this, the airport is a huge benefit. And I think it's absolutely vital to the area. That being said, like I said before, I don't think it's our job to create a mill for something. I think especially when it affects everyone, because literally you could have nothing to do with the airport and your taxes will be affected by it. I feel like that's something that voted the people and, you know, it should be a ballot measure for something like that. And maybe even have a sunset on it, you know what I mean? Maybe it should be voted on every ten years, like the federal aid or some of them, or, you know, I that's the kind of thing, because, you know, the other question with the airport that got brought up by people outside of the meeting was, you know, accountability, how it's ran, how the board is selected. Because there's a lot of things people just don't understand or know about it. And I think the commissioners were a group that were, we're in the same boat. You know, how do they pick their board members? How are they appointed? We don't appoint them that I know of, I've never been a part of an appointment for the airport board, so. Is that a city thing, which I'm assuming it is? So you have the city appointing their airport authority and who's managing the portfolio? How is the money being managed? How is that, are they, are they capturing all the revenue they can? Are that, you know, those are all questions that it's kind of hard to just come in, have a presentation and go, are you going to do this or not? And it's like, well, and I know they came in a year ago, so we did have a little more time to probably look into it. And I can say that the few people that I've talked to on the subject, because it's not like everybody was that interested. But there were a few that voiced similar concerns that they maybe didn't want to participate in it. And I'm going, I had some other people that said they wouldn't and they're fine with it. And I'm going, ma'am, there's already enough of a poll there that maybe you should just let everybody vote on it and not, you know, not put us under the knife on something specific that. I mean, would I probably vote for it? I suppose I probably would, but at least I had the opportunity to vote instead of going, hey, by the way, you're all helping pay for the airport and people maybe just don't want to do that, even if I think that's right. That's why I think the ballot measure for something like that would be important, so. That's where I stood at it last time, I really haven't changed my mind on it, I guess. I don't know if anybody's got any different opinion. I, that being said, I don't want to see the airport go. I would hope that it would get supported and I would, like I said, I would probably support a ballot measure in that regard, but.
You know, they were talking, well, the hospital, you said, well, why don't they pick it up, pick it back up? The hospitals, um, you know.
I see where you're coming from, but I'm finding you can't use funds and stuff like that, well.
Well, yeah, that's the thing, what did the ballot say with those mills and what, you know what I mean? So there's, you know, you have to go back to the intent of the ballot measure. It's even kind of like with property taxes coming up or like marijuana measures and like there's even specific rules usually drafted in those bills on like what funds can be allocated for, like. Like I know with the property tax one now, you can't, you can't do, you can't tax any mills. It's all bonds if you wanted to, like if they would, if the ballot measure would pass to eliminate property taxes, we would have to do like a bond initiative if we were going to like do a road project. We can't raise mills or nothing anymore, like, so.
And then it would all come from the state.
And it would all come from the state. Not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying that's something to remember, like it's a big deal. Now, if you did want to do a project, typically if we need to raise a mill or two to do it, we can. Where now it's like, you got to go and bond it basically.
Do we have somebody in the county who really focuses on grants? Like, really focuses hard and applies for grants? Who's, who works on that job?
Oh, you mean as a county employee?
As a county employee, or somebody else?
I think Mary Sanger. Right, everybody kind of does, I know Mary Sanger.
Every time Grant groups send something out from the local department, you know, grants, I go through the ballot. You can't buy anything. With other grants, it's all.
Oh, another thing too, though, Dan, is generally like on some of these big projects, if we engineer them, a lot of times the engineers will do, you know, like, like the Strasburg Lagoon was one, more engineering found all those grants for Strasburg.
Because they've cost them nothing.
Right, other than the, whatever they paid more to draft the grant and whatever, but right, I mean, that's where.
Mary Sanger's really good.
Mary Sanger's helped us out a few times without a. Oh, those are the additional for the bills? But yeah, I know, like typically, Dan, on a bigger project, if it's engineered, they usually handle a lot of the grants. Especially like if there's, like I know. I think, I think a lot of them usually in their departments, if they're like Marcy, if she's doing something for elections and the secretary of state has a grant project, something, they know about it and they usually go through it. And Mary would probably be, I mean, she's done a lot of grants for us, like maybe what you can call above and beyond, where she found out about a grant.
Well, you know, years ago, I did that energy grant, you know, and put all those crazy comments, like some of the county shops and doors, I mean, and those. You know, there was an energy grant there.
And a lot of that stuff comes from the Association of Counties too, though, right? Like they'll let you know.
This was actually through the county accounts.
Okay, great, but.
And then there was another one for preservation for the courthouse, the stone and stuff, it's called, knock the windows, everyone there. But those, those grants have gotten less and less too.
I actually do know of someone that lives in Linton that's basically a retired. She was a grant writer for City of Jamestown for their job development and chamber of commerce or something. And she's semi-retired, but she had told me before when I talked to her about something that she would be interested in writing grants for us. But like I said, when I even talked to Marcy about it, I mean, a lot of it usually gets handled department by department or somebody else helps us out. And like I said, I'd have to give Mary a lot of credit for some of the extracurricular, when she's found a lot of grants. I know public health writes their own grants typically, you know, so a lot of them usually department by department.
I wonder, this lady you're talking about, she could really write grants for.
Oh, yeah, she would do, I mean, she's kind of almost like freelance now, she's semi-retired, but she would.
Mary's?
No, this, this gala lives in town here that, that said that she kind of.
As you hear, the people bother, that's the people bother. They say, I think Emmitts County could four day, one or two people just strictly focusing on their grants.
Yeah, up to this point, we haven't really needed it because I think we are, we're doing pretty good on grants. And I think we take advantage of quite a bit of them when they come around, but that being said, doesn't mean we probably could maybe hold a little harder.
There's one right now to be taken up service, a thousand dollars.
Pumpkin seeds are sesame seeds, I eat many of them. Because I would be, I would be, no, also, I'm sorry, kidding. I cut them up.
Well, if you guys have done a review of the bills and want to head out, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're good.
Hey, what do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Materi, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Home, any more discussion? I would in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned.